David, am I right that we appear to be over a quorum?
We do have a quorum. I count 13.
Excellent. So with that in mind and noting that the time is 2:01 PM, I'll call this meeting to order. Thank you for joining us, members of the public and commissioners for the regular meeting of the County San Diego's Independent Redistricting Commission. I'll begin by asking the IRC clerk, David Hall, for information for all of us about today's meeting. David?
Thank you, Chair Bame. I'd like to invite any members of the public who wish to provide oral testimony during today's meeting to please review the instructions posted on the redistricting website at www.sandiegocounty.gov/redistricting. We ask that individuals who wish to speak submitted online request to speak form in advance for planning purposes. All requests to speak from the public made at today's meeting will be honored. In addition, agendas, minutes, and supporting materials for the commission's meetings are posted on the redistricting website, including instructions to request translation. Meeting agendas are translated into Spanish, Vietnamese, Chinese, Filipino, Arabic, Japanese, Korean, Laotian, as required by law. Chair Bame?
Thank you very much, David. The next item on the agenda is the roll call. David, could you please call the roll?
Thank you. Before I call the roll, I would like to note for the record that all commissioners are participating via teleconference, and as such, all votes will be handled by a roll call vote. I'll ask the commissioners to please unmute your microphone and say here or present, Chair Bame.
Here.
Vice Chair Katerina.
Here.
Thank you, Vice Chair Katerina. Vice Chair Garcia.
Here.
Commissioner Brown.
Here.
Commissioner Chen.
Here.
Commissioner Diaz.
Here.
Commissioner Dostal.
Here.
Commissioner Hansen.
Here.
Commissioner Inman.
Here.
Commissioner Krugliak.
Here.
Commissioner Larson.
Here.
Commissioner Pons.
Here.
Commissioner Russ.
Here.
Commissioner Serbin.
Here, thank you.
Thank you, Chair Bame. Thank you, David. Thank you, commissioners. Before we move on, I'd like to give Barbara Jimenez a few moments for a brief update on IRC procurements. Barbara?
Thank you, Chair. Staff has been in contact with the ad hoc committees as we move forward with procurement activities. So for outreach and education, following the IRC special meeting on May 5th, DPC posted the RFP on May 6th and held a pre-proposal conference on May 11th. There were multiple attendees, and that information has been posted on Binet, and the RFP will close on June 1st. The demography RFP closed May 10th. The selection source committee has begun their process of reviewing and evaluating the proposals, and it's expected that the SSC will be ready to recommend an award on June 10th. And on another note, at the request of the ad hoc committees, there is a plan to bring forward to the IRC a discussion on a single point of context for the contractors. Mr. Chairman, that concludes my comments.
Thank you very much, Barbara, and thanks in advance to all the commissioners who've been helping move that process along. The next item on the agenda is non-agenda public communication speakers. This is an opportunity for the public to address the commission on subject matters within the commission's jurisdiction, but not listed as items on today's agenda. The only action the commission may take is a referral to staff. David, do we have any members of the public who wish to speak on non-agenda items?
Thank you, Chair Bame. We have five members of the public who have requested to speak in advance of today's meeting. I'd also ask that members of the public who would like to address the commission under non-agenda public communication, please raise of your virtual hand at this time by clicking the raise hand feature on Zoom or pressing star nine if you're dialing in. I'll call those who have requested to speak in advance in the order that we received the requests, beginning with Jean Hui Tran. You will see or hear a notification that you've been unmuted, and you will have two minutes to address the commission. Jean Hui?
Hi, before I go on to giving my statement, I just want to let you guys know that on the meeting agenda, the information for the people doing calling in is incorrect. We have people that are telling me that they can't get in right now. The webinar ID doesn't work. So just to give you a heads up on that, is there any way you can roll back my 15 second?
Please do, David.
Yes, if the staff go ahead and restart the timer.
Thank you.
You have two minutes.
Thank you. So my name is John Wee. I'm an organizer with Center on Policy Initiative. I already submitted a letter to the commissioner this morning about a situation on the voting rights act in the process of selection of demographic consultant. Previously, I have called in and made a point about how the process need to require the prospective consultant to disclose whether or not they previously produced maps that would challenge and even overturn for violating the Voting Rights Act and limiting the presentation of people color. This is an important issue for a lot of communities here in San Diego of people colors, because we have been paying attention a little bit more, and we know that this map usually have been in the past due to gerrymandering our people. And so we would highly encourage the commissioner to prioritize that within the process. But unfortunately, when you voted for that process, you did not include the requirement. So now we have to come back in and make another statement around this. It's that the California District and Commission wisely required disclosure of the patory talent, and we encourage this commissioner, this commission also to do the same thing as well. You should demand the same transparency at your interview with potential consultant. A process that you all, we also urge you to hold it in public as well. I mean, it's a, yeah, because we would like to eliminate any firm chosen to draw the line. She didn't have a pattern of crossing the line on the voting rights. Is this the right thing to do? And it is a right thing to do, and this commission should definitely consider to do that. California Commissioner, they actually even create an ad hoc committee for it. There's no reason why you shouldn't do the same. Thank you.
Our next request came in from Joshua Tetra. Tetra, you'll have two minutes to address the board.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Joshua Tetra, and I'm a political organizer with SIU 221. With voting rights under siege across the country, now more than ever, we must do all that we can to ensure that no community's voices get drowned out. And it's for that purpose that we urge the commission to set the highest standards throughout this redistricting process by upholding the Voting Rights Act. Now, the Voting Rights Act has a long history, but it was fundamentally created to ensure that the electoral power within communities of color would not be diluted because of racist gerrymandering. And it is for that very reason that this commission should not hire firms who have a history of drawing maps that violate the Voting Rights Act. The California Independent Redistricting Commission has recognized the importance of complying with the Voting Rights Act, and this very commission should follow suit. And that is why we urge this commission to add an amendment to the RFP process to require firms bidding to draw the county's lines to disclose whether any other previously drawn maps were challenged or even overturned for violating the Voting Rights Act. We must also have a public interview process of those consultants, ensure transparency, and protect the voices of communities of color. Thank you.
Our next request came in from Piggy Rock. You have two minutes to address the board.
Hello, my name is Christina Piggy Rock Manon Kill. I'm a part-time organizer with the Asian Solidarity Collective. I'm calling in today to urge the Independent Redistricting Commission to prioritize the Voting Rights Act while in the process of selecting demographic consultants and to ensure transparency by holding the interviews public. With the current climate of voting rights being under attack across the country, it is imperative that we uplift the voices of the people and the most impacted and marginalized communities, specifically Black, Brown, and Indigenous folks, people with disabilities, queer and trans people of color communities. Upholding the Voting Rights Act will provide equity in building political power in oppressed communities. It is through closed doors that people in marginalized communities are closed out of the process of their rights that can better their lives and their communities. Therefore, by providing transparency of the interviews, people in the communities can be involved in the process and can build towards liberation. Thank you.
Our next request came in from Candy Custodial Tan. If that person is present and wishes to address the board, please raise a virtual hand. I'll move to our last speaker, which is Shay Miller. You have two minutes to address the board. Shay, if you're there, I think you are muted. You may have to press star nine if you're dialing in.
Can you hear me okay?
I can hear you fine now.
Wonderful. Hi, my name is Shay Miller, and I'm with CPI. I'm just calling because with our voting rights being under attack and all over the country, we must do what we can to ensure that no voice in our community gets drowneded out. We urge you to set the highest standards throughout this redistricting process by upholding the Voting Rights Act. The VR empowers historically disenfranchised communities of Black and Brown communities in particular. We should not hire firms with a pattern of drawing maps to violate the VRA. We should not hire firms whose maps have faced constant legal challenges for the limited representation for the community colors. And we definitely should not hire firms who have enabled political gerrymandering or had colluded with politicians to entrench power at these public expenses. So in establish, we should establish an ad hoc community to ensure that every step of this redistricting process is compliance with the Voting Rights Act. We also want to make sure that the holding the interview of potential Democratic consultants in public to ensure that there is total transparency. Also, I'd like to add an amendment to the RFP process to require prospective consultants to disclose if they've previously drawn maps or have challenged or overturned any of those or for violating the voter act rights. So please listen to your constituents and hold everybody accountable. Thank you.
If there are any other members of the public who wish to address the board, I do see Candace Custodial Tran, who did request in advance to speak. You have two minutes to address the board.
Yes, hi, my name is Candy. I am the executive director of Asian Solidarity Collective. I wanted to really share that voting about voting rights have always been at risk and even more than ever. So we must really protect our communities and do the right thing by ensuring that our communities heard, counted, and valued. So we urge you to set the highest standards throughout the redistricting process by upholding our voting rights, the Voting Rights Act, because the VRA actually protects voting rights for everybody, and it especially empowers historically impacted and vulnerable communities. So what we need to do is to establish this ad hoc committee, same thing that the California IRC has done to ensure every step of this redistricting process is in compliance with the Voting Rights Act. This is how we ensure safety and protection for everybody and build trust in our communities in this process that is transparent, that really protects us from gerrymandering happening and politicians who do this at the level of the public's expense. So that's about it. Thank you so much for the time.
If there are any other members of the public who wish to address the board, you're welcome to raise a virtual hand at this time. I would like to note for the record that the commission's log on ex parte communications received has been updated on the website and not seeing any further requests to speak. That concludes non-agenda public communication, Chair Bame.
Thank you, David, for conducting that and for keeping an active eye on it, and thanks, members of the public, for your comments. The next item on the agenda is the approval of two sets of minutes from both the April 22nd, 2021 regular meeting and our special meeting that was held on May 5th, 2021. Again, we'll be approving two sets of minutes. David, are there any requests from the public to speak on this item?
Thank you. We did not have any members of the public who have requested to address this item in advance, but if anyone listening would like to address the commission on this item, please raise a virtual hand by clicking the raise hand button on Zoom or by pressing star nine if you are dialing in by phone. Not seeing any requests to speak. This concludes public comment on this item, Chair Bame.
Thank you very much, David. Commissioners, are there any clarifying questions or comments about either set of minutes? Seeing none. Do we have a motion for approval of both the minutes from April 22nd and of May 5th?
No move.
Moved by Commissioner Larson, second. Commissioner Brown, thank you both. Any discussion? Very good. David, could you please call the roll for the vote?
Thank you. Commissioner Chen.
I.
Commissioner Brown.
I.
Commissioner Inman.
I.
Commissioner Katerina.
I.
Commissioner Dostal. Commissioner Diaz.
I.
Commissioner Larson.
I.
Chair Bame.
I.
Commissioner Serbin.
I.
Commissioner Russ.
I.
Commissioner Hansen.
I.
Commissioner Krugliak.
I.
Commissioner Garcia.
I.
Commissioner Pons.
I.
That motion passes unanimously with all commissioners present and voting aye.
Very good. Thank you all. We'll turn now to agenda item five, a report from the Redistricting Outreach and Communication Ad hoc Committee, including some information about the educational tour that we've discussed previously. In fact, we considered it on March 25th, including five virtual meetings to be hosted by commissioners as informational sessions about redistricting and about the IRC. For more on those sessions, as well as the current version of the PowerPoint presentation and other related issues, I'd like to now give co-vice chair Rosette Garcia the opportunity to provide comments from the ad hoc committee. Co-vice chair Garcia.
Thank you, Chair Bame. I'm very pleased to be providing this update today. You'll see on the slide here just a very quick overview of what we've been up to, mentions that we've had two meetings. We've had a number of, there's been a flurry of emails, and we've been getting a lot done without actually meeting over Zoom. And I've highlighted a few of the things that I'm going to cover right now, so why don't we move forward to the next slide? Yeah, so here's the first slide of our PowerPoint presentation. I'm really excited and pleased to let you know that we've finished that presentation. Go on to the next slide, please. The, yeah, the educational events that we're planning to have, we'll cover what you see here on this slide. What is redistricting? Who are we? Who is the Independent Redistricting Commission? Why does redistricting matter? And then maybe most importantly, how can I, meaning I, the public, how can I participate? So we, you all have received this PowerPoint presentation where we've asked for comments and for suggestions for how we might fine tune it a little bit. We did get some comments about some of the slides being, you know, having some problems with them. And I think that you'll discover that some of these slides are actually animated. And so what you might have seen didn't look right, but when we're actually doing the presentation and where and the slides are being animated, you'll see, for example, a series of maps, or you'll see the text appear in different, you know, over time. So you won't actually see text on top of text. I wanted to point out that this presentation is meant to serve as a template. It has been vetted and reviewed by all the, you know, by our council and whatever, but it can be personalized. And we, you know, are encouraging commissioners to think about ways that we can present this information. Several commissioners can present and divvy up the presentation. You could even consider doing it the way I presented with the statewide commissioner, Patricia Sinai. We did it in a sort of an interview format where we asked each other questions that led to us delivering the information in a, in sort of a casual interview kind of format. What else did I want to tell you? Let's go ahead and move on to the next slide. Yep, so now what we're working on, so that's, that's, you know, somewhat completed. You also probably received a script that accompanies that presentation, and we are still fine tuning the script, but for the most part, the information is there. Now we're in the midst of scheduling these actual educational events, and you should have received, I'm sure you received, an email from Barbara Jimenez with some proposed dates. We don't have them up on this flyer. What you see in front of you is a draft flyer that we will be using to advertise the events. But our first step was in trying, as you can see, we've kind of organized these five educational events by district. Of course, all of the events will be open to the public wherever and wherever you reside. But we'll be sort of focusing each event to groups and, you know, community groups and residents in those districts. And what we first, you know, we're trying to do is to actually match commissioners with the events in their district. And so that's the email you received, asking you about your availability and your interest in presenting on the date that we sort of penciled in for your district. However, I think we should be open to commissioners participating without regard to the district they reside in, so that if you're interested in participating in one of these events and you are not available to present on the day that was suggested for your district, you'd be more than welcome to participate on some other date. We want everyone who wants to participate to have a chance to, and if you can't participate during these educational events, we're going to have a lot of many, many more public meetings when we start reaching out for the official public input and we start having those public hearings. And so let's go on to the next slide, because I think. Yeah, so I didn't put on this slide the actual dates, but our first presentation is intended to be geared towards District 5, and you can, you can see there sort of how we had them planned. But you'll be getting a follow-up email from Barbara Jimenez with some more information. We're hoping to finalize these dates and really get going on, you know, publishing the information, advertising, getting the word out so that we have good turnout at our events. Next slide. Yep, so the, what's next? We have someone here today who's going to show us the website with the commissioner bios and headshots. I think it's great. I think we're also going to see the request in IRC presentation fillable form where groups, you know, anyone who's interested and would like to request one of these presentations can do that right from our website. We're initiating these five meetings, but we're open and available to do as many as the community would like to have. And then because we're starting these presentations soon, we've also scheduled a media training event today, which I'm sure you saw on your agenda. So with that, I think I'll hand it back to Chair Bame. Thank you.
Thank you very much, co-vice chair Garcia. I want to thank commissioners for following that presentation, contributing and adding suggestions and thoughts and comments, and I'm sure we all look forward to having a continued exchange and inputs on how this works. As Commissioner Garcia said, as co-vice chair Garcia said, this is a dynamic living document. You all have various experiences and I think unique talents to bring to the presentation, and we want everyone to feel comfortable presenting it as they like. I know both the co-vice chairs and I are available, as well as staff, including Ms. Harris in just a moment, to talk about any ideas or thoughts about how you might want to steer things or amend things. With that, I'd like to next turn to public comment and then open the floor for clarifying questions in keeping with our usual procedures. David, are there any requests from the public to speak on this item?
Thank you, Chair Bame. We did not receive any requests in advance of the meeting, but I would ask that anyone who would like to address the commission on this item, please raise a virtual hand by clicking the raise hand button on Zoom or pressing star nine if you're dialing in by phone. Not seeing any requests to speak. This concludes public testimony on this item, Chair Bame.
Very good. Thank you, David. I'd like now to open the floor to any clarifying questions commissioners may have. Commissioner Pons.
Yes, great work by the ad hoc committee. My question goes to the initial slide deck that was received on the 8th of May. I had a question about slide number 22 that talked about the timelines. And my proposal was we need to illustrate to the public that we understood the impact of the slide and the census data being received, how that impact has been mitigated through either training or adjustments to the process so we can make sure that we restore the confidence and the trust in the public about this process and the commission itself. I see that that slide moved to the back, and it's now slide number 34 with draft on it. So what is the intent for that timeline slide?
Do you want me to take that? So first of all, can you clarify for me the point that you made about it's moved to the back to slide 34? I didn't think we had that many slides in our presentation, but you're right. It is sort of near the end, and I do want to point out that the timeline is, needs to be modified. It actually doesn't accurately reflect the information that we have today. But maybe you can clarify your question just a little bit more for me, Commissioner Pons.
So it doesn't show maybe because I got the background, but it's, that's okay. So it was initially slide 22, I believe, and now it's slide number 35, and the title says tentative timelines. And so I'm just trying, yeah, there you go. Thanks, David. Appreciate it. Thanks, Chair Bame. But I just wanted to make sure that it didn't get lost in translation, because that's a really critical slide, and people will question what happened. Why is it, you know, did we understand the timelines and the impact? And what do we did, what did we do to mitigate those, you know, the reception of the census data?
You're so right, and I think that we will probably fine tune this part of the presentation as we get more information. And actually, you're going to hear some of that new information in the later, in the last agenda item, I think it's item nine, when you hear from the legislative ad hoc committee. So that's a very good point. I think from the point of view of the flow of the information, it appears where it does because it kind of makes sense for it to be there, but I wouldn't want anyone to think that we put it at the end because it's unimportant and we're just sort of throwing it in at the end. And perhaps even now with, even though a lot of the dates and a lot of what's going on is still unknown, it could be that we could beef up that part, that moment in the, in the presentation a little bit. I think that's an important point that you raised, Commissioner Pons. So thank you for that.
I would just add, I think it's really a question of sequencing rather than priority. If that's one of the last slides and you say out loud, now as I show you the next to last slide, and all of a sudden the audience sits up at attention because, oh, he's at the end of the presentation, previewing what those next steps are in the timeline coming up may indeed help reinforce that rebuilding of trust, Commissioner Pons, that you rightly mentioned. That said, I also think, and other members of the ad hoc will correct me if I'm wrong, that's exactly the kind of flexibility I think that we want commissioners to feel. If you would feel better about putting that slide up front or having it up front and having it again as a wrap-up, I think that's completely appropriate, and that's where we'll depend on. And that's where we'll depend on everyone's unique style and abilities and how they want to present it. But I'm glad you brought that up. Thank you.
So my last point is, it's on slide number 21. And, you know, it's some very strong language and we use it a lot and you hear it a lot in the public domain. And it's a very politically charged comment. It says that redistricting can take away, take away minority voting rights. Is that a true statement? Can it actually take away or change legislation? Or is that a legislative process? You know, because I mean, that's a politically charged statement. I mean, I know it can be suppressed and oppressed, but can it be removed and taken away? Especially when you think about the comments made by the callers, number two and three. And they talk about every one of the, both of those comments reflected around the Voting Rights Act and other legislation. So is that a, is that a true statement? Is it accurate? They say it can be actually taken away?
Yes.
Commissioner Servin had very strong feelings. Good. Okay. Well, Commissioner Servin, do you want to build on that?
I mean, that's why we're here. That's the whole point of independent redistricting is, 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 is in, is the, the reason why we're here is because of that history of, of, of redistricting being used to not only suppress and restrict voting rights, but the, the rights of minority communities in the voting process, but to essentially nullify those rights by
Commissioner Servin, because words matter. And you just said to marginalize and to suppress, you know, but to remove, I mean, that's different. And understand what I'm, where I'm coming from, so you can understand where I'm trying to take you. Because look, I am from Alabama. I was born and raised near Selma Montgomery Birmingham. So I understand this topic very seriously and it's sensitive to me, but I don't like to overstate the obvious, right? And so if this can, if what, if redistricting can remove, I mean, I understand that. But if it actually suppresses and oppresses, I mean, that's a more accurate description of what we are doing. Because it's more like marginalization instead of to remove. So just help me to understand and make sure we talking accurately to the public about what we are doing.
Well, one way to, to one way to maybe consider how to, how, how redistricting may result in the removal of voting rights is that if redistricting happens in a way that affects the marginalization of minority communities and then as a result, then policies or other statutes, policies and statutes would then be, would then be easier to pass that would then remove those rights. So by marginalizing communities, then then the, then policymakers will, will may, maybe empowered to then take the next step to not just marginalize, but then implement these restrictions.
So if, if I could, Commissioner Pons, you and I completely agree, words matter. I'm a stickler for language. And I believe, I think that it is absolutely a true statement that redistricting can silence a minority or silence a population. And in fact, that's the reason we have the Voting Rights Act. And one of the questions that they ask, there's, this is a series of test questions that that the Voting Rights Act requires. And one is that, does the majority block voting typically defeat the preferences of the minority community? And that is a situation that happens. And I think that answers your question. A, a minority population can actually, if the lines are drawn in a specific way, can silence a certain population and can affect their ability to elect a representative of their choice. So that, I don't think we are exaggerating. I don't think we are, you know, shouting fire in a crowded theater. It's, I think it's an accurate statement. And I, I hope that answers your question.
Oh, it does. I mean, I just, you know, again, you have to understand, I mean, I just want to make sure that we are absolutely spot on in how we have this conversation with the public. And I want to be absolutely spot on when I have this conversation with my fellow commissioners. Because it's important that we have an understanding and terminology and taxonomy is critical to that discussion. You know, and so I just want to make sure that we are all clear on what the definitions are. Because listen, I understand why we're here. I just want to make sure that while we are here, while we are here, we are as effective as we can in doing what we're supposed to do. Thank you.
Thank you all for that. I have Commissioner Chen, then Commissioner Russ for, again, we're in clarifying questions, but I want to leave a little bit of room for flexible discussion on this. And then after those two, Commissioner Larson, but for right now, Commissioner Chen.
Mr. Pons, thanks for bringing the point up. What I got out of what Mr. Pons is saying, and I think I definitely agree, is that we aren't taking away anyone's right to vote, which is what that says. You're, we're taking away your voting rights. We're not taking away anybody's right to vote. Redistricting doesn't take away anybody's right to vote. What we are now, gerrymandering can certainly minimize the impact or reduce the impact of your vote without a doubt. I mean, I'm a Republican in California. From that perspective, none of my votes count for anything because we lose every, every, every election here, but I have a right to vote. I may be in the minority, but that's the way the democracy works. So I don't, I think it is overstating to say we're taking away a right to vote. We can say redistricting absolutely can minimize the impact of your vote. But to me, that is a difference, that's a difference. And, and I would agree with Commissioner Pons that how we state that, we should be careful about that and talk about minimizing impact versus removing your rights.
Thank you for that input. And again, this will be an evolving document. And if specific wording changes could help or be tailored, I think the ad hoc committee would be more than interested and supportive, attending as well to what Commissioner Servin had to say. And just to be clear, Commissioner Chen, your vote always counts here. Russ and then Commissioner Larson.
Commissioner Bane, can I just respond very quickly? I'm looking at that slide and it does say redistricting can take away minority voting rights. And I, I would agree that, that that is, that that doesn't accurately reflect the point that we're trying to make.
Now, I think something like
I hadn't seen that. I, I was responding to your question, Commissioner Pons. And maybe I heard a different question than you actually stated, but that's a very good point to make or to bring to our attention. We can fix that.
There you go. Commissioner Russ, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, well, I know Commissioner Garcia is a former professor of English. So I know that she's very, very particular in, in words. And I think, I think Commissioner Pons, it brings up a very good point. The thing of it is at, at the following slides are kind of interesting. There were ones that we saw in Common Cause where, where we actually are forming majority minority districts, you know? And that's something that's, that is under consideration. I, I don't think that it's necessarily taking away voting rights. It's diminishing. So I would agree with, with Commissioner Chan and Commissioner Pons. But I do think the following slides do, do show the, the way of, of forming majority minority districts that, that we should be very mindful of.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Larson.
Well, I think this is a very good briefing and I, I thank my fellow commissioners who had a role in making it. I just have one nit to pick and that's really on slide number 19, which tries to tie the, the county into why redistricting matters. And it tries to make the point that we're a huge county, six point five billion dollars expenditures. But then it says a redistricting affects tax collection, it affects the jails. That's not true. This is, this is a laundry list of all the facilities and services that the county offers, which is all good. It's all good. The issue is we want to make the distribution of these resources equitable across the five districts. And the redistricting serves to, for that purpose. But it's not going to impact tax collection or jails or some of these other lists of things. So I, I just suggest we just change the tone of that slide into what it really does matter, that we are equitably distributing the resources of the county to the population. That's it.
Thank you for that. Seeing no responses on that and no further questions. We'll move on to the next agenda item with many thanks. And again, continue requests to be in touch with staff, both about scheduling and participating in these meetings, in these sessions, as well as to continue to improve the slides as you review them and consider them on your perspective. Barbara, let me just make sure there's nothing more staff needs from this agenda item, correct?
You are correct.
Very good. Thank you. All right. So thanks again. Moving on, we will turn to item six on the agenda, additional commissioner training. Today, we're going to have a presentation intended to support the educational tour specifically with some advice and tips on how to deliver and facilitate an effective presentation. In that sense, we may just be continuing the previous item, but we have a guest speaker for today. Let me introduce Karen Harris, the staff development coordinator for the county's Health and Human Services Agency, where she leads a training team for instructor-led, online and video-based learning for more than 6,000 employees. Her career, career highlight thus far was serving as the lead facilitator for the county's strategic plan for diversity and inclusion. I say thus far because of course, this is now going to be the highlight of her career. But Karen graduated from Georgetown University in Washington, where she obtained a degree in history and diplomacy in developing regions from the School of Foreign Service. Karen, you and I need to have a talk. She also holds a master's degree in organizational leadership from the College of St. Catherine in St. Paul, Minnesota. Again, we'll have her presentation, then we'll hear public comments and then commissioners will have a chance to ask questions and seek some clarifications. This is an informational item with no action for the commission. Let me now turn to the presenter, Ms. Harris, please go ahead.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, everybody. Pleasure to be with you. I put the PowerPoint up, so if you could just give me a thumbs up that you can see the PowerPoint. All right, great. Appreciate that. So as you can imagine, I am a trainer and I give presentations all the time. And however, I have throughout my career experienced presentation anxiety. And so I'm like many people, when it comes to public speaking, it's one of those things that makes me anxious. And I've had to learn to manage that throughout my entire career. And of course, different situations make me more anxious than others. Particularly for me, it's very large crowds, over 200 people or high stake presentations where there's a lot at stake. So I'm going to be sharing with you some of my tips today about how to manage anxiety and also other tips related to giving effective presentations. So these are the topics that we're going to be covering. We're going to talk a little bit about virtual presentations. What's different about giving a presentation virtually versus in person, the way things used to be? We're going to talk about what does the audience expect from you? We're going to talk about how to engage your audience. And in a minute, I'm going to use an icebreaker activity and an engagement tool to engage all of you. So we'll see how that goes. And then we're going to talk about introductions and closings. Those are always important parts of presentations. We're going to talk a little bit about presentation pitfalls. And then we're going to talk about how to respond to questions at the end or during a presentation. And at the end of this brief presentation that I'm giving you, I can accept and entertain any questions that you might have. So those are the topics that we're going to go over today. And I'm going to start with presentation anxiety. Might as well get that one out of the way, right? I love this quote by Fritz Perls. And he says that fear is excitement without the breath. So if you imagine yourself standing on the rim of the Grand Canyon and you're looking down and you might feel a great amount of fear because it's so deep. Or if you are breathing properly and you are taking the moment in and breathing the fresh air of the Grand Canyon, you might feel excited to be on the rim of the Grand Canyon. So there's a difference there and the difference is really in the breathing. That for me is one of the most important ways to center ourselves. It's the difference between scattered energy, when we feel scattered and hectic and maybe short of breath because we're afraid of something, or having very centered energy. And breathing is what makes the difference between being scattered or being centered. So you probably all know that fear of public speaking is one of the population's greatest fears. You probably know that many people experience it. And in fact, many people fear it more than death, spiders and heights. Yes, believe it or not, that's how, how much people fear public speaking. About 73% of the population fear it. What you might not know is that it's called glossophobia. We don't hear that term very often, but that's what the fear of public speaking is, glossophobia. So to get you all engaged in this presentation, I'm going to do an icebreaker activity. And you can access, this is going to be a survey or a poll. You can access this poll in one of two ways. One way would either be to take out your smartphone and go to slido.com. And I just put it on the screen. You should be able to see slido. And you can also scan the QR code on the screen, on your phone, on your camera, and that will just pop it up. So whatever's easy for you. Or if you don't want to use your smartphone for this activity, you can also just open another internet browser. So a little bit of toggling, open an internet browser and go to slido.com. So either way, you should be able to get to this poll. Once you get to slido.com, then you're just going to put in the code SR, I mean S, sorry, S four, six, eight. That's the code and that should enable you to access the poll. So I'm going to go ahead and open the poll question. There's three brief questions. The first question is, have you ever experienced presentation anxiety? And you have four choices. So as people put their responses in, you'll see the responses in real time. And it also tells us how many people have accessed the poll. So we have 14 people so far who have accessed the poll. So great job. You found it. So 50% say often. Somebody said never. So that's, that's, that's good. And then we have 24% say sometimes, 24% say rarely. Okay, so now you get the hang of this poll thing. Now let's go to the second question. I have two other quick questions. I want you to think about a fear that you have had in your life that you've been able to overcome. Maybe it was something you were afraid of when you were young. Maybe it's something you still are afraid of, but you've been able to overcome it for the most part. Just go ahead and type in whatever that fear was. Heights, flying dogs. Yeah, actually, when I was doing some research, I was surprised that it's a very, it's one of the top 10 fear, fear of dogs. I didn't realize that. Math, someone put math. That's awesome. Swimming in the ocean, a fear of crowds, big spiders. Okay, darkness, elevators. Okay, so there's a variety of different fears that people have. Singing, yes, don't ask me to sing. I have a fear of that too. Or starting conversation with strangers. So a lot of different fears. Now, I would like for you on the next poll question, just to put, how did you overcome that fear? So these are fears that you've been able to overcome. How did you overcome that fear? Just say a few words about that. Practice, someone said they took up rock climbing. So probably the person that was afraid of heights said that they took up rock climbing, I'm guessing, as a way to get over that fear. Mind over matter, becoming more prepared, joining a choir. So I'm guessing the person who had fear of singing actually joined a choir. Repeated exposure to nice dogs. So you'll see a pattern here that what helps people conquer their fears is actually confronting their fears. I don't think anybody conquered their fear by running away from their fear or trying to avoid it altogether. Usually that doesn't help you conquer it. So someone climbed half dome. I want to talk to you about that because that sounds amazing. And if you're afraid of heights and you did that, I am super impressed with you. So meditation. So meditation, okay, practicing. Alright, those are great. Thank you all for participating in that. I'm going to go back to the PowerPoint presentation now. So that's just an example of an engagement tool that you can use that's pretty simple, gets people involved, and anybody that has a phone can use it. So now I want to talk about managing presentation anxiety. And I want you all to know that nervousness is normal. In fact, it's good because it's a release of adrenaline. And if you didn't feel any adrenaline before you did something like a presentation, then it might mean that you're going to be kind of monotone in your approach or possibly even boring because you need a little bit of adrenaline to get you ramped up for the presentation. And like I said, it can be excitement if you have controlled breathing, or it can be fear. So the first technique that to me is most, most important for calming myself down is breathing. And in particular, diaphragmatic breathing, so using your diaphragm to breathe and sending oxygen to all parts of your body. You can easily look it up on YouTube. The hardest part is to figure out how to spell diaphragmatic. And once you do that, you'll find the YouTube video, and it's two minutes in length, and you can just quickly start practicing. This is a technique that you can use anytime, anywhere, and it's a, it's a great one. So I highly recommend that. The next technique, I think a lot of anxiety that we have comes from a lack of preparation. So for me, you can never be over-prepared. I'm a big believer that if you rehearse and you practice and you know what you're going to talk about, then you're going to feel a lot more comfortable. You may know Winston Churchill was one of the great presenters of the 20th century. He received a Nobel Peace Prize for his speeches and the quality of his speeches. On average, he developed 42 drafts for every speech that he gave. So he was very well-prepared, and that was the key for him. So when you're thinking about preparing, you want to think about getting to the point where you're so comfortable with your content, you don't have to think about what your content is on presentation day. You can just focus on how to deliver your content. So that's why the preparation is important, so you can get to that level of comfort. Once you're prepared with the content and you know the content really well, then you want to practice your content. And you want to deliver it in the environment that you're actually going to deliver it on presentation day. So if you're going to do it virtually, then practice delivering it virtually. This will build your confidence, and it'll help you avoid doing things like saying, um, because the more you practice, the more you'll get comfortable and you'll be able to eliminate those kind of different habits that you might have. So when you rehearse, use the technology. If possible, do it in front of an audience. Have some people there. If you can't arrange for that, just record yourself. Most laptops will enable you to record yourself. I know you probably don't want to watch yourself, but you, you're going to learn from what you see when you watch your recording, and you're going to see where you might need to improve your skills. So use that as an opportunity, and if you have a live audience, ask them for feedback. They should be able to tell you what you did well, which, what you need to work on. Another techniques for managing anxiety is positive visualization. And this is a great technique because a lot of times what happens when we're afraid of something, we imagine the worst. We start thinking, oh no, I'm going to forget what I'm going to say. My brain's going to freeze up. I'm going to go blank. And what's happening when we're imagining that, we're having negative thoughts in our head. And those negative thoughts are actually creating the possibility of, of not doing well, of failing at whatever it is that we're afraid of. So what you do when you do positive visualization is you're actually thinking about everything going perfectly from start to finish. It's a great thing to do the night before the presentation and just think the whole thing through. Once you visualize success, you're actually remapping the synapses in your brain for success, and you're creating the possibilities that success will happen for you. So visualization is very powerful. It's not just something that, that you think about. It has an effect on your brain to counteract the negative thoughts. So that's a great tool as well. And then finally, these are just some of my favorite ones. There's actually a lot of ways to manage presentation anxiety. So you might find something else works, works better for you. But the last one I want to share with you is accept imperfection. Nobody gives a perfect presentation. If you look back at Martin Luther King's "I Have a Dream" speech, he stutters over his words at several points. But people don't think about that. What they think about is his passion. They think about his vision, and they think about his authenticity. And people want to see somebody giving a presentation who's sincere, who believes in what they're talking about. So as long as you're sincere, people will forgive any imperfections that you have, and we're all imperfect. So don't worry about that. Most importantly, be yourself. So that's a little bit about presentation anxiety. Now we're going to skip to the next item, which is doing virtual presentations. And many of us, we've been in virtual presentations now for over a year. So we're getting the hang of it, and it might be the first time you're actually delivering the virtual presentation. So there's some things to think about. The first thing is think about your background. What is going to be behind you? What are people going to see when they look at your background? If you're not happy with the background, then there's a lot of templates that you can use in Zoom and virtual backgrounds. So consider that. You don't want anything distracting people while you're speaking. So look at that. Also, think about your webcam. You want to make sure your webcam is at eye level. You don't want people looking up your nose during the presentation or looking down your nose during the presentation. You want it to be straight on. So make sure that you have that at the right angle. And then you also want to think about lighting. Ideally, you would have a window in front of you. So I have a window right in front of me, so it's, it's a great place for me to sit. If I had the window behind me, there would be a lot of shadows and I would be in the darkness. So depending on how you're set up, you might need to get a 10-inch ring LED light that costs $25, and you can attach it to your computer. And if you have this LED light, you can flip, flip the switch at any time to have better lighting. It's like professional lighting. So if you're going to be doing evening presentations, you might want to do that because I often flip on my light. I have one too, even though my lighting is great in front of the window, but I often flip on them, on the light after 5:30 or 6:00 PM when it comes to be the evening hours and the lighting is not as good. So I recommend that. Another thing to keep in mind about virtual presentations is that your tone is pretty much your most important asset that you have. We don't have the ability when we're presenting virtually for people to see our body language and all our hand gestures and, and movement around the room like we did when we were in person. Pretty much all we have is our facial expressions and our tone. So we have to work with that, and we have to be enthusiastic and even dramatic. So sometimes it might feel like you're over saying something, but it's going to be more effective because that's really all you have to keep people's attention in a virtual presentation. So the next thing to think about is what are the protocols of the virtual presentation? And I would recommend that at the beginning of your presentation, you have a slide. As people are logging in, you put a slide up that basically says little reminders about mute yourself, turn your camera on or off, or if you want to ask a question, this is how you're going to do it during the presentation. These are the protocols. Make sure you have good internet connection, whatever it is that you want to remind people. Because even though we've been doing these virtual presentations, the protocols are different for every meeting. So you want to let people know what the protocols are for your meeting. And then think about your engagement tools. You can keep people's attention for about seven or eight minutes, but then you're going to need to bring them back in somehow. How are you going to do that? How are you going to engage people? Are you going to do a question in the chat box or a survey? Or if you have a co-presenter, you can pass it to the co-presenter, and that will help to keep people engaged. So think about seven or eight minutes as the timeframe that you have to work with to keep people engaged. And then finally, don't be afraid of silence when you're doing a virtual presentation. I can't hear a thing except myself, so it's completely silent, which is different than being in the classroom where you can hear, you can sort of see and hear people. So if you're going to get people involved with a question or putting, waiting for them to answer a question, you have to give them a minute or two to type their response in the chat box. So it is going to be silent. Don't be afraid of that. That's just part of allowing people to think about what you've said and then respond to what you've said. And plus, people need time to find their hand in order to raise their hand, right? So you have to, you have to wait so people can find those tools. And then in addition to that, make sure that you, you're familiar with the audio. And is it going to work better for you to use a microphone? Or is the microphone on your laptop good? Do you have a lot of background noise? Whenever I give a presentation, I have to close my windows because I live next to Miramar, and there's all kinds of airplanes that get in the way. So sometimes it gets a little stuffy in my room when I'm giving a presentation. But think about what is the background noise going to be and how's that going to affect my presentation? And then finally, your, your notes. Where are you going to put your notes? Now, if you have two screens and you're thinking, well, I'll just put my notes on my other screen, remember that that will mean that you're looking over here the entire time while you're presenting, and you want to look at the webcam. So for me, I put my notes right in front of me. Actually, print them out, old-school style, and put them right in front of me so that it doesn't look like I'm looking away or looking down too much, hopefully. So those are some things to consider about virtual presentations. Now, what does the audience expect from you? Couple of things to think about. You should always think about your audience. The audience will be different everywhere you go. Who are they? What do they already know about the topic that you're going to be presenting on? And do they have any special interest in your topic? Is there something in particular that they really want to know about the topic? As much as you can customize your presentation to the audience, the better because that's why you're giving the presentation, it's because of your audience. And so you want to speak to them. You want to make sure that you know a little bit about them before you present so that it's, it's going to be a good fit for what they're looking for. So think about customizing. Think about credibility. What is your credibility? Your audience wants you to be credible. There's a couple of ways to do that. One is through the introduction that you give about yourself. Another way is to be knowledgeable about the topic. Or another way is to be very committed to the topic and show your passion and commitment to it. Those are ways to establish credibility with people, and when you have that, then they'll, they'll trust you. You also want to make sure to explain the significance of your topic. And for you all, I think it's pretty easy because you can start the present, presentation by saying that redistricting happens once every 10 years. So this is our opportunity to do this work. And I think that establishes right away what the significance of the topic is. And then finally, people are always looking for connection. They want to feel some connection to the, to the presenter. And you can do that in a number of different ways, which we'll talk about in a minute. But you can share a little bit about yourself. You can tell the story. You can engage with them in some way. But connection is important because it builds trust. And I think that on a topic like what you're presenting on, you do want to build trust with every audience that you go to. So think about how to do that each time you present. So when you're thinking about engaging the audience, I know that, you know, time might be limited. You might not have a lot of opportunity depending on where you're presenting or how long you're presenting for. But you, you do want to engage your audience every time if you can. And there's a lot of different techniques that you can see on the screen, the chat box, the polls, showing, having people show their cameras or you showing your cameras to them, having question and answer, stories, anecdotes, quotes. So think about engagement tools because people want to be active participants. They don't just want to be passive. And so how can you get them engaged in your presentation, I think is very important. So let's talk a little bit about starting strong and ending strong. So you want to think about your introduction and your closing. Those are the bookends for your presentation. And if you capture people's attention at the beginning, it's much more likely that you'll keep the present, keep their attention throughout the whole presentation. So there's a lot of ways that you can start or end strong, and the techniques that you see on the slide can be used either in the introduction or at the, at the end of your presentation. So you want to be personable and connect with people. Maybe you can surprise them with some information they didn't know, share a statistic or a fact that they didn't, that they weren't aware of. You want to maybe ask them a question at the beginning. See if they know the answer. You can, it can be a rhetorical question or it can be an actual question. That's a good way to get people engaged right from the beginning. You can do icebreakers or, or polling activities. You could start with a really nice visual, something that they'll never forget. You know, a picture can make an impression on people, and they'll never forget it. You could also end with a visual if you want to. And when you think about inspiring people, you, what's your call to action? What are you asking them to do as a result of the information that you're sharing? There should always be some sort of call to action, and how are you going to inspire them or challenge them to get involved in whatever it is that you want them to get involved with? So quotes are always nice too, to end with a quote or to start with a quote. Those are ways to personalize and really get people engaged. So what are some pitfalls in your presentation? So I put some of the most common ones here. Timing can be a pitfall. When you have a certain amount of time for a presentation, you have to make sure that your presentation fits within that time period. People are not very forgiving when you run out of time and you had to skip like five slides. People, they are not very forgiving. And they're also not forgiving when you go over and you end up keeping them a lot longer than you said you were going to keep them. So you have to rehearse so that you're right on time with your presentation and that you do get to the questions. You don't say, I'm sorry, we ran out of time for questions, so we can't take any questions today. People don't like that either. So timing is, can be a pitfall. Another pitfall is the technology. Obviously, we want to always test our technology, and we recommend that you do what we call tech test. And the tech test is basically where you're checking in 15, 20 minutes with somebody on, on your team who's presenting, and you check their audio, you check their background, you check their lighting. You see everything, and you let them know what to adjust to in order for it to work well. And then on presentation day, you want to use the same, same, everything that you did during the test. Don't switch to a new location because then if you're in a new location, it, you know, you haven't tested it out. Maybe the internet connection is not that good in that part of the house. So you want to make sure that wherever you do your tech test, that's where you're going to do your actual presentation. So don't, don't let the technology get in the way of giving a great presentation because it's something that you can plan for ahead of time and rehearse and make sure that you, you know what's going to happen on presentation day. And then the other pitfall, another pitfall could be the audience, and this could happen in a couple of different ways. One is that you don't know your audience, and it's clear that you don't know your audience. And if an audience feels like you don't know them because of the way you're speaking to them, then that, that can be, that can undermine the credibility of your presentation. Another thing could be ignoring your audience. Maybe they keep asking, raising their hand, and, and you're not acknowledging them, or you're not paying attention to them. That could be a pitfall as well. And then finally, it could be a difficult audience member, somebody that wants to give you a hard time, and they could try and throw you off of your presentation. So that's a potential pitfall as well. So there, those are things to consider. Finally, your approach when you're doing a presentation. Don't just read the slides to people. Don't be monotone, vary your tone as much as possible so you can keep, keep people engaged with the topic. And don't use any acronyms or jargon. If you use, I mean, the county has a lot of acronyms, and there's a lot of things out there that, that will alienate people and make them uncomfortable because they don't know what you're talking about. So don't let that get in the way of building rapport with the audience. So most of the pitfalls that you see here are things that can be avoided through preparation and through contingency planning. So think about it ahead of time. If you all are going to do co-presenting, which I think is great because that way it keeps people's attention, you can talk about what are we going to do if your internet connection goes down in the middle of the presentation? What's our contingency plan? And that way, you know how you're going to handle the situation. So you can plan and avoid many pitfalls just by thinking them through ahead of time. So how to respond to questions in your presentation? Here are a few suggestions of things to do. As we said before, as I said, let people know what the protocol is going to be early on so they know how they're supposed to ask questions. And then anticipate what all those questions are going to be ahead of time. And I understand that you all are going to be putting together a frequently asked question and answer sheet for the commissioners, which is great, and that way you'll have a lot of those questions thought of ahead of time. Anytime you encounter a question that's not on your frequently asked question sheet, I recommend that you put it on there so that you can learn as you go through this, learn from each other and share it with each other. If it surprised you, don't let it surprise one of your colleagues later on. Share that information with them. Another thing to think about is the scope. When people ask a question, you want to let people know if that's within your scope or not. And if they're asking something that is outside of your scope of what you're presenting on, let them know that and let them know how they can get the information they need or who And let them know how they can get the information they need or who the appropriate person is to go to is. Um, refer them to the, the right source and let them know it's outside of your scope for this presentation. Another thing to do when you're answering questions is listen to the whole question. Make sure you understand what people are asking. Don't interrupt or don't guess by thinking you know what they're asking. And think about, um, do they have something, they're trying to make a point or they're really asking a question? You can kind of distinguish of between what they're, what they're doing. So that takes active listening. And then understand the context of where they're coming from. If you know a little bit about the context, that might help you. If you don't understand the question, just ask them to say it again or clarify what the question is. Don't assume that you understand the context if you don't. So you can ask for clarification, be concise, stick to answering question. And instead of wandering off into other territory, just answer the question that they're asking. And don't answer it if you don't know. Uh, it's okay to say, I don't know the answer to that. And it's okay to refer them maybe to your co-presenter or refer them to county council or refer them um, to staff member. Or to say that you'll get the answer for them later because you don't have the answer right now. That's okay, don't, don't be concerned about that. It's better not to take a guess or to answer something that you don't know. And then it's always nice at the end to say to somebody, did I answer your question? That's always a nice way to finish it off. Um, and they can let you know if you answered the question. So those are some tips about responding to questions. And my um, final slide here is just to remind you to be yourself. As Oscar Wilde said, everyone else is already taken. And so um, work with your strengths. You know, the great thing about presenting is that there are many presentation styles that can be effective, not just one style. You don't have to try and be someone else. You know, every time I, I think about giving a presentation like this, I try to think of a good joke or something funny to share with the audience. And often I, I just decide not to do that. And the reason I decided is because that's just not me. I'm not someone who tells jokes. So why should I get up in front of a bunch of people and try and tell a joke when it, it's not my style? So I want to work with whatever my style is and what my strengths are. And by doing that and using some of the tips that I shared with you here today, you're going to give a great presentation. So uh, with that, I want to open it up to any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Ms. Harris. Um, I'll, I'll beg your indulgence with our proceedings and our, our normal procedure. I'd like to ask first, uh, David, if there are any members of the public who want to address this item? And then I promise we'll have some time for clarifying questions and comments.
Thank you, Chair Bame. We did not receive any request in advance to address the commission on this item. But if there are any members of the public who would like to address the commission, please raise a virtual hand by clicking the raise hand button on Zoom or by pressing star nine if you're dialing in by phone. And not seeing any requests to speak, that concludes public testimony on this item.
Very good, thank you, thank you for your patience, Ms. Harris. Commissioners, clarifying questions, comments? Commissioner Chen.
Uh, just a quick question. So what do you do if your internet goes out in the middle of the presentation?
Well, it is good to have a backup or co-presenter in that situation that can carry on with the presentation. You could, if you, if you were going to be presenting by yourself, you could just let people know if you do have shaky internet. Well, first of all, that the ideal scenario will be make sure you have good internet. And you might need to, you know, do a wireless access network or something that, to increase your internet speed. If that's going to be a possible challenge for you. So try to prevent it ahead of time. Um, but you could let people know if that does happen, um, just give me a minute and I'll log back, back on. Um, if, if that's just something that goes out every once in a while. But if it completely goes out, then you need a backup plan for that. So uh, just things to think through ahead of time, that would be an advantage of having two presenters.
Uh, let me call Commissioner Krugliak and then co-vice chair Garcia.
Sorry, double muted. I just wanted to have a quick response to that. I've lost internet before and one of the things that works great for me is having my audio on cellular. Because then you can always just, you actually don't lose connection to the people you're talking to. You can just say, my video has gone out. Uh, and then you can do what you can to, um, you know, let them know that you're working on it before, um, while you're coming back in.
That's true, that's a good point. You could switch to your phone and have the, the 5G network connect you without the internet.
You could even have your, not my case, a friend, have your fourteen or fifteen year old who's interested in helping be on that phone and be able to take it. But advise them not to answer, well, he's trying his best, sorry. Uh, Commissioner Garcia, co-vice chair Garcia, then Commissioner Brown.
Yeah, I, thank you, um, for a very informative presentation. Um, two questions. Can you repeat again what the light was that you said, uh, was a good thing to attach for lighting? And then my second question, um, is can you embed the polling in the presentation? So that people can respond like via the chat function or, or something? Um, I, I've been, I think I've been at some webinars where we do it that way. As opposed to having to do it on your cell phone or um, on, on a different, um, in a different window.
Sure, I'll answer that question first. So you can put the link to the poll in the chat box so they can just click on the link and go. But it still has to take them outside to another browser to the internet to do that. And then for the lighting, um, I recommend LED ring light. A ten inch ring light is the one I got. And it's, it's great because it just connects to your computer. You can position it right behind, so it's, the lighting is right on you. And you can also put your, your cell phone inside the ring light. If, if you needed to switch to your cell phone, it would be ready to go.
Thank you, Commissioner Brown.
Thank you for the presentation, I appreciate that. Um, I know in, in the past, when I've given some presentations, uh, depending on the size of the audience, um, when we were taking questions from the audience, we would repeat them if it was a larger audience and not necessarily so for a small audience. What happens in a virtual audience? Do you need to repeat those things or?
Yeah, that's a good point, that's a good question. I don't, I don't think you usually need to do that because everybody should have heard the, the question in the same way. It's not like being in a room where people in the back of the room didn't hear it. So um, unless it came to you maybe privately with the private chat or something, then you would, then you would possibly repeat it to everybody. So, but if someone says it on a virtual meeting, you probably don't need to repeat it.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions, requests? Very good. So I'd like to thank Ms. Harris one more time for joining us today and providing such timely and useful information. I think we'll all afford to seeing this used and deployed as we go forward with the educational tour. Ms. Harris, I hope you won't mind if we have additional questions. Commissioners, please relay them through barman and staff. And please don't be surprised if we invite you back for a future presentation.
I'd be happy to do that. And I did take a look at your PowerPoint, it's a great PowerPoint. So I didn't spend any time on how to deliver power, how to design PowerPoints because it looks really good. So you're ready to go.
The appreciation goes all around, thank you. Thanks very much, Commissioners. All right, the next item for consideration, item seven, discussion and possible approval of the redistricting budget recommendation from the Budget Ad-Hoc Committee. As a reminder, this ad hoc committee was formed with the purpose, quote, "to review the budgetary impact of changes to the contract with legal counsel, to develop recommendations for an update to the redistricting budget as a basis for requests to the Board of Supervisors." That's the item we're going to take up right now. And to consider the creation of a standing committee and return to the commission for consideration. So we actually have two items coming up. This one, item seven, that will look at the recommendations for requests to the Board of Supervisors for a budgetary increase. After we complete this item, our next item, item eight, will be dealing with the other recommendations from the Budget Ad-Hoc Committee regarding oversight. I'll ask Commissioners to please keep that in mind as we go through the discussion. For this agenda item, I really would like to keep discussion focused and restricted to the possible request for a budget, to the Board of Supervisors for a budgetary increase. You all have today's agenda item materials that included or advised line item budget from the ad hoc committee. If approved today, the staff will move forward with the county's process to bring the IRC request to the Board of Supervisors for its consideration. And staff will continue to keep us updated as that request moves forward. But first, before we consider that or vote on it, to go over the numbers, I want to turn to co-vice chair Amy Catarina, please.
Forgot to unmute, sorry, thank you, David. Um, I really enjoyed meeting Karen virtually um, a few weeks ago and, and appreciated her presentation. I regret that I am following her because I don't think my presentation is going to be as engaging as hers, but I'll do my best. So we are here today to talk about the budget recommendation. And um, I think if you could move on to the next slide, I would appreciate it. As David mentioned, um, our, our budget ad hoc committee had three uh, main purposes. One was to review the budgetary impact and David went over these. And two was to develop recommendations for a budget. And third is to consider the creation of a standing committee. So that's just to keep, give us a frame of reference of what are, what are, what our goals were uh, when we, when we got started with this ad hoc committee. So you can move on to the next slide. And our proposed budget is running from October 2020 through March 2022. And that uh, extended timeframe to March is reflective of the fact that our legal contract runs through March 2022. Our proposed uh, RFP contracts will also run through March 2022. So we looked at the amount of money we need to have available in totality uh, for, for that eighteen month period. And you can move on to the next slide, please. So here is um, a snapshot of our proposed budget. You can see right off at the top, uh, the County of San Diego originally allocated to us $750,000 for our budget. Um, what we are looking for, for our new proposed budget is an increase of $467,500 for a total budget of 1.2175 million dollars. Uh, that budget is broken down into um, four main categories. Legal expenditures, we know were originally 150,000. But when uh, the legal consultants' um, purpose was expanded to include um, general counsel as well as providing us with counsel on our procurement items, that budget swelled to $510,000 or an increase of $360,000. And we'll go into uh, the more detail as we move on to the next, next slides. We also have uh, our other consultant expenditures at $495,000. And while that budget line item did not change, we did fine tune uh, the line items to reflect the amounts we have established for demographics and outreach consultants. Our total IT expenditures went up an additional $5,000 from 19,000 to 24,000. And our other expenditures were raised 52,500 from 85,000 to 138,000. And in addition, we have some uh, reserve that we decided to establish to account for any unforeseen expenses. Um, and those could include in-person meetings and other expenses. Um, and I think what's important to appreciate as we think about this budget in totality is that there are things that are going to happen that we are not going to foresee. And that there is no way we could have foreseen. And with the best amount of budget analysis that we can do, we have put together a budget that we feel is fair and represents what the commission needs in order to really fulfill our mission. So if you don't mind going on to the next slide, I'll start with the breakdown of legal expenditures. So as you may recall again, our initial legal expenditure was expected to be 150,000. Uh, with the addition of general and procurement legal counsel, um, the new contract is for $400,000 uh, through March 2022. And it is capped at $400,000. There is a possibility uh, that we will need additional legal counsel. Um, and we have put in that category $60,000. And this would be um, additional legal counsel with our current legal firm. Um, and then there is another additional expert redistricting counsel at $50,000 that is reflective of any pre-trial litigation uh, that may occur or any opinions that we may need on maps um, as we move into uh, really the, the last part of this year. Um, if we end up having to go to trial, uh, our legal expenditures would, would be significantly higher. And um, and at that point, I believe a consideration would be to, to discuss it with uh, county, uh, you know, board, well, work with the Board of Supervisors for additional allotments. But for right now, we are looking at total legal expenditures of 510,000 through uh, March 2022. And if you could move on to the next slide. And I know we're going to be coming back to look at all these slides again. If you have additional questions or need to be, have a refreshment of what, uh, what is included in each of these breakdowns. Uh, next slide then. So the other big uh, ticket item uh, that showed a big increase was translation expenses. And there are, um, there are a lot of reasons for this. I'll walk you through the additional meetings and expense, expenses uh, for those meetings. Um, so staff had advised us that we probably need to consider adding at least four IRC meetings as we move into the later part of this year. Um, and, and into 2022, um, just to be on the safe side, if you will, to make sure that we have uh, expected, anticipated expenditures accounted for. The five educational tour meetings also need to be, um, need to have notices and they need to be translated as well. So there is some additional uh, budgetary expense for the educational tour meetings. And in addition, we found that, that um, we were starting to have some special meetings. Um, and I don't want to say on a regular basis, but they were coming in about once a month. So it felt prudent to add some expenditures to cover any additional special meetings uh, as, as we go forward. I really want to point out that staff has been very helpful in preparing this information. And that we are looking and they are looking for ways to perhaps reduce the per-meeting fee for translations without compromising any quality um, on the translation side. So, so the good news is if we need the money, it's there. If we come up with um, perhaps some additional ways to save on translations, we can then um, address, address those. But the money, the money can be used elsewhere or it just goes back into the, the, the county's coffers, if you will. Um, also bear in mind that the seven public meetings that we're going to be putting on and the two um, line drawing public meetings are not included in this budget, in the IRC budget. They are reflected in the outreach consultants budget. So we do not have to account for those meetings. Um, next slide, please. So here is a quick breakdown of the revisions. Um, there's a change in expert legal services, there's the new legal contract, there's additional expert legal services. There are IT expenses, translation, then the reserve for a total of $467,500. Uh, next slide, please. So it is the Budget Ad-Hoc Committee's recommendation that we uh, increase the IRC budget by $467,500 to account for increased legal responsibilities, IT expenses and translation expenses, and to establish a reserve bringing the total IRC budget to $1,217,500. The motion we would like you to consider after we have our public comment and clarifying questions uh, is below. And I think that is it, if, unless something else has popped in my presentation, I don't know. Um, do you want, is there another slide, Barbara? No, okay. Excuse me. So David, back to you.
Thank you very much, both to you, co-vice chair Catarina, and to the members of the ad hoc committee. You're going to, the other Commissioners are going to get tired of me saying thank you to you all because. to you all because you've done such great work and it's so expansive. But it really has been, I think, useful and a great description of all the breakdown. All right, before we move forward, let me ask first, commissioners, do you have any clarifying questions or comments that you'd like to make? Commissioner Inman, go ahead, please.
Yes, the question I had was for the budget item, public hearings. I see that that is zero, so I assume that's intentional. Do, is there a contingency for, you know, June 15th, hopefully everything opens up and whatnot? I would just wanted to get some more information on that and why it was zero.
So just to summarize quickly, we did, because we don't know how many of our our public meetings that we're going to be holding for the the seven public meetings and the two public line drawing meetings. We don't know exactly what the situation is going to be when we get to those meetings. So rather than put or even if they will happen. So I think we can all agree, we would love to get back to having in person meetings and we likely will. There is additional money in the reserve to 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 reflect any costs, hopefully any costs associated with public meetings. I mean, the reality is we hope there are no costs with public meetings. We hope to use public venues. But but again, we don't know. So at the moment, we decided to leave that zero, but make sure that there was enough in a reserve to account for what those expenses might be going forward.
Can you share a minute, clarify things for you? Good. Co vice chair Garcia.
Yes, I think I have a couple of questions. Do I understand that we initially hired external legal counsel and they were going to provide us counsel on line line drawing and maps? But now they are our general counsel and RFP counsel. And so we no longer have any counsel at all for line drawing and maps. Is that true?
That is correct.
Okay. So was our external legal counsel originally budgeted for $150,000? Going to be providing more than just counsel on line drawing and maps? Or was it just that? And the reason I ask that question is if we expected them originally to cost for that expense to be about $150,000 and now we're only budgeting 60, is there some change in in the kind of counsel that we're getting?
I I did read through both the contracts and I don't want to give you an incorrect answer. So if it's okay, I would, I would like to see if either Barbara Jimenez could answer that or perhaps Margarita Leone from our legal counsel.
Yeah, hi, David. Chair Baim, can I be recognized?
Please go ahead.
I, just a little bit, I think you all know my background. It is in redistricting and voting rights. As well as knowledge of public meetings, open meeting act, et cetera. And with my partner Hillary, we bring an emphasis also on public laws governing commissions. So the original contract, I was not going to provide our firm was not going to provide general counsel or procurement counsel to you. But that situation changed. The county actually asked if we could step into that role. But since what I'm bringing to you in the general counsel role also covers a good deal of mapping issues such as public hearings, how they're conducted, basics, all of the basics, in fact, an extraordinary amount of knowledge on of redistricting and voting rights. I will be able to bring that to you on an ongoing basis. But there is the reserve for outside counsel or external counsel as Commissioner Catarina set forth. In the event, we want another set of eyes, another opinion in a particular, in a difficult spot. So it's not a situation where you will be without guidance on the principles of redistricting and voting rights. I intend and consider it my role to bring that to you on an ongoing basis. However, there may come a time when a second set of eyes is good. And I think that's been wisely budgeted for, and I would be very comfortable recommending it. I hope that answers the question.
Yes, I think it does. I I was trying to understand the difference between an original budget for external legal of 150 and a new number, what for what seemed like the same thing, but which was a smaller number, but it sounds to me like external legal is, that would be a narrower and almost supplementary to the the counsel that we will already have in in an unusual circumstance.
I, I, I agree with that characterization and hopefully Commissioner Catarina, vice chair Catarina has this same vision. I don't want to characterize as external counsel as wholly extraordinary or unexpected. Because it may be that this commission, when its map is completed, would like a an outside legal opinion on the map for the purpose of the record. So if that budget is there, we don't have to be sued to use it. At least that's not how I would envision it. But yes, in the prior contracting, county council had no background in the redistrict. There are very little, of course, very competent attorneys. When I stepped into the general counsel role, I brought all that. So we don't need on a day to day basis, external counsel to watch our mapping. But there may be a time when we want that opinion or additional advice.
Okay, so I, and I hate to belabor this, but I just really want to understand it. So your current contract, which says general legal counsel and RFP or whatever contract doesn't exclude you from providing some line drawing and mapping legal advice. That's what I want to make sure of. That's another way to ask it.
I know the question I, and I want to make sure I answer it. I see that as part of my responsibilities under contract.
Thank you.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Commissioner Servin.
Yes, hello, can you hear me?
Barely.
Can you hear me better now?
Yes, indeed.
Yes, indeed. Okay, so I guess I'm sorry, and I don't mean to belabor the point either. I just want to make sure I'm understanding what was just said. So does the scope of work for the for our legal retainer include our counsel rendering an opinion on the legal sufficiency of any proposed or final maps?
Margarita, did you hear that?
I'm so sorry, I, I blanked out a bit early. Commissioner Servin, I think I understood the question, but I would I would rephrase it that you're asking if my contract would include a formal legal opinion on the map. I think as currently drafted, it does not. All right, that could be me. If that is a choice of the commission, we may be better served having an outside set of eyes on the final product. So that is reserved. However, on an ongoing basis, with line drawing, questions about population, the allocation of population, the justification for deviations, the effectiveness of minority districts. On an ongoing basis, I would provide advice on those issues based on 40 years of experience. So the single legal opinion is the item that is not included in the general counsel role. Does that answer your question, Commissioner Servin?
Yes, understood. Thank you so much.
Okay, you're welcome.
Very good. I have Commissioner Kugliak. And then I just want to make sure, are there any other commissioners interested in asking questions? Good. So Commissioner Kugliak, please.
I might, I might be a little confused. So I think it would be helpful if the way it's presented could be clarified a little bit. So potentially, when we look at it, we see external legal and we can call this Leone law firms and understand what was originally intended. And then it sounds like the new external legal actually means something different. It means a third party external review of the final map, which I presume was not part of the original external legal 150K in the 225 budget. So that that would be clear. And then we could have the original external legal, which maybe just gets completely wiped out rather than change from 150 to 60. And then the general counsel is basically an addition of 250, renamed in addition of 250 rather than nothing to 400. And then additionally, there are two line items, one for the external review of the map with independent, an independent counsel. And then this fourth one, which is just called external expert counsel, but from Ms. Leone, what it seems like is that's actually potentially your law firm pre litigation review in the event that the map gets challenged. If if that's right, is there just a way to kind of really lay it out so that even just from the the table itself, there's no ambiguity? Because I think a couple of us are really struggling with just how it's laid out visually.
Yeah, I I hear you and I apologize if the presentation is confusing. You know, when you're in it every day, it makes a whole lot of sense and having to come in and look at it in the abstract is a lot more difficult. So I appreciate your comments and so one of the, we can, so two things I would say, one is we can, we can lay this out any way we want so that it makes sense to us. But what we're really looking for in the end is a an increase in budget that we have to recommend to to the county board of supervisors for an additional allocation or that we have to ask for. And and those, these individual line items are really only for us to understand how that, how we get to that number. So I I certainly could go through and and, you know, rearrange that that line item area so that it is a little bit more clear. And I'm happy to do that. But but bear in mind again that this is something that we need to present to the board in in totality and that those monies can be moved around once they're done. And there's an additional kind of issue from me. And that is primarily that we don't know the exact numbers. What we do know, what we have a contract for is $400,000. We know that. The other items are are our expectations, which may not come to pass. But they are expectations. So we were trying to follow the flow of the contracts. But in reality, I think you're right, it would be better to have presented it with more line items and a little bit more detail on on how that, how that plays out. And if you'd like, I can, I could probably quickly try to pull something together for you if you want to see it, but I I think it's, you know, I'll leave that to you if if you want, if you want me to do that.
I think at least for our records, it would be helpful for that. You know, just just so we'd understand. And then just for, you know, since this is public money and it's an awful lot of it. I mean, just contract wise, in terms of what when county was providing expert general counsel in terms of the expected man hours that we were planning, especially even now, since the staff time has almost doubled, presumably the external legal counsel would have as well. Just, you know, back of the envelope, is this what, even though it wasn't under our budget, what would have been budgeted overall by the county for this type of general counsel support? So that's a question maybe for Barbara.
Might be a question for Barbara, but and I know that this has come up a couple of times, but and I can't always remember which conversation and who with whom. But the, but the county is not budgeting for the IRC to the extent, to that extent, I guess is the right way to put it. And and Barbara, if you, I don't know if you, you want to address that more succinctly or you know, let, you know, let me know. But that's my understanding is that there is, it's not easy to compare the apples and oranges in this case. Is that, is that right, Barbara?
Yes, Commissioner. Yes, can you hear me? Okay, Commissioner Catarina?
Yes.
Yes, I'm working, I'm working off the two devices. I took Commissioner Kugliak's tip and I'm on the phone and the computer. They're working on the internet by the office, so it's a little fuzzy. But yes, to respond to your question, the staffing cost and or the legal cost are not necessarily tracked and that managed. But I would say that because county council was involved in that initial agreement and the subsequent amendment that and not speaking for county council, the the estimates or the cost specifically around the council does fall within what would be anticipated. And then the last thing I would say is just a reminder, you mentioned this, Commissioner Catarina, there is a lot of unknown and there's a lot of estimates. And that also carries over into some of the other presentations and the other costs, et cetera.
Okay, Commissioner Kugliak, is that good for now?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Very good points. I'm mindful of the clock, but I have Commissioner Pons and co vice chair Garcia. And then not seeing any others, we'll move on to public comment after that and then to discussion and emotion. So Commissioner Pons.
Yes, great, great brief. And thank you to the ad hoc committee. To Commissioner Catarina, you used two words that made me sort of sit up. You said funds can be moved around. I didn't understand what that meant. And if there's a need for a line item that said discretionary funding, maybe that's a mechanism to allow you all the flexibility or us to flexibility to move funds around as needed. And so if that's something that we want to think about, maybe adding a line item into the budget and call it discretionary funding and not just reserve funding. I mean, it gives us flexibility to do the things that we need to do on a short notice. And I'm sure we're going to have to do things on short notice. Over.
That's, that's a great suggestion. Yes, we can do that.
Very good. Thank you for that. Co vice chair Garcia.
Yes, just one question. But first, can you refresh my memory as to how many additional meetings you're projecting or budgeting under the translation increase in budget? Was it? Do you remember? Is it?
Yeah, I do. Sorry, I couldn't get my mute off. So I believe it's 18 meetings. Between the, between all of the different. And again, and that's an estimate because our translation costs, there's some amount of a set number. We have a feeling what that's going to cost. But if we receive requests for languages outside of the the general H that we provide, there will be additional costs for those. And so we're trying to account for over the course of our 18 months. Some months where we have no additional translation expenses versus other months where there might be a live translator in 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 another language that is not normally provided. where there might be a live translator in, in another language that is not normally provided. Or translation might be requested in another language that's not normally provided.
Okay, great. So my question has to do with, did you take into account, or would this be something you would consider? For example, the five educational events are going to be essentially identical. And I'm wondering if there are any savings there for the translation events? And are we talking about? And maybe, I don't believe I have to ask this question now, but are we talking about translating documents? Or translating the meetings afterwards so that they're available? You know, transcripts avail, what exactly are we referring to? Yeah, and so I'm just, again, like, with some of the things that we're doing, which are almost rote, right, or a repetition of one thing, I'm wondering if there's any, if, if that was taken into consideration, if there are any cost savings that are associated with that.
I think, I think, and Barbara addressed this like a little bit too. You know, it is my hope that there will be many examples of cost savings on, in this budget. But right now, we have to base it on what we expect. And so, and it is not a number that is going to be the same for every meeting. It just so happens that we have, we have an estimated number based on experience so far. And with expectation that there'll be additional cost savings. So, so you're right, when a document is translated, and if ninety percent of the words are the same as the last one, we are not going to be charged the same price. We'll only be charged for that, that extra, the new, the new language. But, but for every document, it still needs to be read. It needs to be checked to make sure it's correct. And so there is some cost associated with that as well. So ideally, what we're looking at is trying to come up with a number that we can justify, that we think will be, will provide us with enough cushion so that if we, in the future, have additional requests for more languages, languages outside of our standard eight, we will be able to, to address those in our budget. The idea behind setting the budget, and I recognize it's high, and the majority of it is related to legal, for sure, but, but we really wanted to, to put together a budget that would, would serve us well. We can go back to the commission, to the board of supervisors for an additional allocation. We can. But it would be better to have enough planned so we don't have to. And so that was kind of our goal. When we get, if we get to a six-month point or a nine-month point, and we see situation changing, then we can adjust and react to, to that. But this budget is designed to get us through, through this eighteen months efficiently and effectively. But having said that, it could change. Does that answer your question sufficiently? Because I could have Barbara provide more, because, you know, staff was very helpful in kind of guiding us to, to the right numbers, right? And giving us support, you know, this is too low, too high, we think this is going to happen. Don't forget this. So those are all the, the pieces that we put together to, to prepare the budget.
Yeah, I guess I, you know, it is a big number. I'm just looking at. I, I'm just looking at, you know, the increase in the budget for translation being at over fifty percent, the increase in the budget for legal, you know, just sort of the, the magnitude of the increases. And I just want to understand that we're, you know, I want to feel confident that I've done a good job so that we're, I feel like I've been, you know, prudent and thoughtful with taxpayer money. And so the way I'm thinking about it is, and I understand why you would have calculated that way, looked at total number of meetings, and each meeting is, you know, costs X. So fifteen times X equals that, and that's how much you increase the budget by. But I'd like to make sure that if, for example, we have essentially five identical meetings, we translate it once, and we don't pay for the addition, you know, that, that sort of thing, that we're, we're, that we're being really prudent with, with the dollars. I would hate for the public to later say, wow, redistricting was great, but they sure spent a whole heck of a lot of money, and feel like maybe there wasn't that much value added. So, thank you.
Well, I hope they don't feel.
Commissioner Caterina, this is, this is Barbara. Yeah, no, you covered it wonderfully. I, thank you. You covered it wonderfully. I think the one thing I would add to differentiate is when it comes to translation, for example, the script or the PowerPoint, that would be translated once. And as long as there were no changes, there would be no additional cost. Frequently asked questions, handouts, all of that would be translated once, no additional cost for subsequent presentations. When it comes to live interpretation or interpretation during the sessions, you will have a variety. It'll be paying the time for those translate, interpretation to actually occur in the meeting, and it could be in multiple languages. It could be one language only one time and multiple language the next time, which then you would have a variety in cost.
Okay. Good. Thank you for that. Let me now turn to David, not seeing any other questions. Are there any requests from the public to speak on this item?
Thank you, Chair Baim. We did not receive any requests in advance of the meeting, but if any member of the public would like to address the commission on this item, please raise a virtual hand by clicking the raise hand button on Zoom, or by pressing star nine if you're dialing in by phone. We do have one request to speak. You will have three minutes to address the commission. Please begin by stating your name for the audio record.
My name's Jong Lee. I'm with Center on Policy Initiative. I just want to get some clarification on a portion of discussion just earlier about how there might be a need for an external legal counsel when it come to providing opinions on the final map. I am just curious, what is that process going to look like? That's all. That's my question. Thank you.
If any other member of the public would like to speak, you're welcome to raise a virtual hand at this time. Not seeing any other further requests to speak, that concludes public testimony in this matter.
Very good. Thank you, David, and thank you for the comment. All right, to move on and discuss the item, we will need a motion. That motion, I think everyone saw on the screen. Staff, if you can bring it up one more time, I can read it out loud, but I'd be willing to entertain it. There we go. Good. So that motion to increase the IRC budget in the amount of four hundred and sixty-seven, five hundred thousand to one point two one seven five million, and direct staff to request that from the board supervisors. Commissioner Chen?
Yeah, I'm moved, so moved.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Commissioner Pons, thank you very much. Discussion. Any further comments? Very good. We will be moving to a vote in a moment then, unless there are any requests to speak. I'll ask David to go ahead and call the roll, please.
Thank you, Chair Baim. Commissioner Serbin. Commissioner Serbin? I didn't hear you.
He may have departed.
Do you want to give a thumbs up perhaps? Or a thumbs down?
Aye.
Commissioner Russ?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Garcia?
Aye.
Commissioner Dostal?
Aye.
Commissioner Inman? Commissioner Larson?
Aye.
Commissioner Hanson?
Aye.
Commissioner Diaz?
Aye.
Commissioner Krugliak?
Aye.
Commissioner Caterina? Commissioner Caterina? Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Chair Baim?
Aye.
Commissioner Pons? That motion passes unanimously with all commissioners being present and voting aye.
Very good. Thank you, commissioners. And again, thank you to Co-Vice Chair Caterina and the ad hoc committee for that presentation. So moving on to item eight. Our second comment, rec, set of recommendations from the Budget Ad hoc Committee. Following the committee's, commission's discussion, our full commission's discussion at the last meeting, the Budget Ad hoc Committee has developed a number of alternatives for consideration. Let me mention that we may not be taking a vote on this today for reasons that I'll explain later. But I'd like commissioners to keep in mind that we may only have a discussion of both whether to discuss any of these particular items and recommendations, as well as how to take action on them if we are so inclined at our next meeting. Those alternatives include, as you've seen in the agenda package, the possible expansion of the role of the ad hoc committee to include developing processes for additional financial oversight. Or a second alternative, the possible creation of a treasurer role to include additional budgeting and financial oversight. Or the possible creation of a budget and finance standing committee. Let me now turn to Co-Vice Chair Caterina again to provide some brief comments on the Budget Ad hoc Committee's thinking and how these considerations were developed. Co-Vice Chair Caterina?
Thank you. Thank you, David. So this is now the third part of our purpose as Budget Ad hoc. And, and it was to think about what we need to do related to forming a standing committee. So if you can move on to the next slide, I would appreciate it. So the standing committee considerations that we investigated involved quite a few meetings with staff and also with, with the legal team and the commissioners who, who support and, and carry the the ad hoc committee are Commissioners Larson and Commissioner, and Diaz. And I really want to thank Arvin Sonia for their hard work. And with all of us being on multiple ad hoc committees, it was a little challenging sometimes to find a meeting time where none of us were previously involved in some other event. But we did look into this. We take this responsibility very seriously. The independence of the commission is of utmost importance. And we work with staff. But we need to make sure that what is clear to the public is that we are acting independently. So, so we, we looked at, you know, do we really need to have some financial oversight? And, and our, our opinion was, the three of us, that yes, we do. So then we started looking into, okay, what is that going to look like? So we started looking into kind of some of the parameters for setting up and continuing standing committee, committee meetings. And as you may recall from our discussions about the difference between an ad hoc committee and a standing committee, is that the standing committee is a public entity, similar, and, and under the same guidelines as our regular IRC meetings. So, so we worked with staff and we came up with some, some fees, two thousand dollars a meeting for agenda translation. And this is a lower number than we saw in the other budget because it was, it, it's a short, typically a shorter agenda. So it wouldn't have as many words, because we are charged per word. It wouldn't have many, many words translated. There is also some startup legal fees that need to be incurred with this standing committee as well, and also additional ongoing legal fees. And we looked at eventually what could be a total budget of somewhere between seventeen thousand and twenty thousand dollars till the end of the year for a standing committee if we decide to go in that path. Another thing to consider when looking at a standing committee is who is going to be on it. You could certainly look at having your, your budget ad hoc team transition to a standing committee, or you could open it up to all IRC commissioners who are interested in, in participating. At this time, we don't recommend the creation of a standing committee, but we do recognize that the IRC needs additional financial oversight. So if you can go on to the next slide. So here, we, we had three general ideas, and David, David also described these. Expand the role of the Budget Ad hoc Committee to include developing processes for financial oversight. Create, creating the position of a treasurer and including budgeting and financial oversight functions and their job responsibilities. Or, again, the three of us did not want to form a standing committee, but absolutely, we have to present this option to the full IRC. If, if the rest of you think we need a standing committee, then we will have a standing committee, assuming we vote and it passes, of course. So those are the three, kind of the three bigger picture options that we looked at. And, and remember that we still rely on staff to do the, to do the work. And that this oversight, this additional oversight that we're looking for is really to ensure that the IRC is, is independent and is, is demonstrating that they are paying attention to these important issues. So next slide. So if we want to expand the role of the ad hoc committee, we know that the three purposes, we would have to have a motion. And, and again, this is not on the table for today. This is only for discussion. We would have to have a motion that says that we are going to expand the role of the Budget Ad hoc Committee to include oversight function, you know, developing these processes for additional oversight function. So that is, that is one option. So next option, if you could go to the next slide, is to create the role of a treasurer, and it would include budgeting and financial oversight. We would obviously have to have a job description. We would have to define the responsibilities of the duties of the treasurer. The treasurer would be, could be a current officer or a commissioner. And a current officer could be a vice chair, for example, or a commissioner. So, so certainly, if, if you are a commissioner who is really passionate about this issue, this might be something that you could consider, and perhaps we can discuss as we're talking about how to, how to accept, if you will, interest, if someone's interested, how to, how to communicate that to, to the board. And likely, it would be through Barbara, as, as we do most of our communications outside meetings. If we do establish a treasurer position, this also would need an action item. And we would also need to be prepared to amend the bylaws to reflect the treasurer's roles and responsibilities as well as any procedures that are developed. And I think if you look at this, you, you can say, you know, it is likely that we are going to have some additional budgeting questions as we move forward. There are so many things that are unknown and unknowing. We need to be prepared. And if, if we have, you know, any option should include, you know, kind of being prepared for, for additional changes to budgeting and finance. So next slide. And the third one, again, is to establish a standing committee. We would conduct all of the business of the standing committee in public meetings. They would likely hold monthly public meetings, report findings to the full IRC for decision-making. None of these options that we're talking about have any authority to do anything outside without IRC approval. So we need to make sure that everyone understands that no one is going to be making a decision on behalf of the IRC by themselves. And, and that, and that we just need to make sure that whatever decision we make, we structure it properly so that there is feedback to the IRC, and the IRC is making the, the full decision-making, you know, taking it into consideration. In addition, the standing committee is likely to be very time-consuming and expensive, because we do have these additional fees. And, you know, in, in the mind of the ad hoc committee, it just wasn't worth the additional time and money to, to stand up an official standing committee. But if we are so inclined, we can have a motion at a future meeting to form a budget and finance committee. And again, amend the bylaws to reflect the creation of the standing. the creation of the standing committee and work with legal to set up the standing committee appropriately. So next slide, I think we go back to, yeah, so one more. I think. I think we're going to go all the way to the end. So again, we we wanted to move on to discussion because again, we're not going to have a motion today. But we need to kind of get the pulse in the room. And David, can I turn it back? Is this appropriate time to turn it back to you?
Sure. So thank you for that. I think the best way to proceed on this particular item is we'll hear from the public first, just in case there are any public comments. And then I'll explain how I'd like to have clarifying questions followed by what amounts to a straw poll where we'll be asking commissioners if these options are of enough interest that we ought to have some discussion today. Or whether without that kind of interest, we might want to have a brief conversation today and think about between now and our May 27th meeting, how we might exercise that kind of oversight within existing authorities. But for right now, I'm planting seeds purposely to let commissioners think about it a little bit. For right now, let me ask David if there are any requests from the public to come in on this agenda item.
Thank you, Chair Ben. We did not receive any advanced requests to speak. But if any member of the public would like to address the commission on this item, please raise a virtual hand at this time by clicking the raise hand button on Zoom or pressing star nine if you're dialing in by phone. Not seeing any requests to speak. That concludes public testimony on this matter.
Thank you very much. So for right now, I'll ask for clarifying questions with the idea that if we need to get into a discussion, we can. But I'm hesitant to get into that discussion without having a little more indication of where the the commission's interest is. Commissioner Gustaf, I saw you first, but I think you brought your hand down. Okay, very good. So Commissioner Inman, then Commissioner Hanson, Commissioner Serbin. Good. So Commissioner, please go ahead.
Yes, thank you, and I appreciate all the the work of the ad hoc. I guess what I'm trying to understand is the pluses and minuses, if you will, compare and contrast treasurer to standing. I hear standing is expensive and time consuming. Does that mean treasurer wouldn't be? That's what I I guess that's my question basically is clarification of why you prefer treasurer as compared with a standing committee. I don't think I quite heard heard anything speaking directly to that. That's my question.
That's fair enough. I'm not sure I said anything, so I'm happy to answer it. So the treasurer, in effect, would would be similar to an officer in in the IRC. So we have two vice chairs and and certainly the vice chairs could take on the responsibilities that we define for the position of a treasurer. But it is not a unfortunately, it's not a paid position. We don't need to hire anybody. We just need somebody who is passionate about numbers. Somebody who wants to and is concerned about making sure that that everything is being done properly, which which it is. But but we need to, we need to demonstrate that we're we're checking, if that makes sense. And and so what you really are looking for is someone in a treasurer role who's willing to take on a little extra. It's not something that every commissioner is going to be willing to consider. And it's very important that we, as a group, discuss and decide on what the the job description is, if you will, for lack of any better term. What are the roles that we expect this individual to play? And what are their responsibilities? So there are, there are many things that a treasurer in this situation could do. You you could have a treasurer who presented, worked with staff. And this is probably the most important part is we are working with staff, works with staff to present invoices once a month for the commission to to view and approve. And this is a very simple way for us to demonstrate oversight of our financial processes in in conjunction and in coordination with staff. I mean, we are not taking over the staff's role. We're not checking on staff. We trust staff. But but we need to show that we are, we are, we have a structure in place that demonstrates to the public that we are independent. And I think what's important to consider is our our IRC is very different than some of the other IRCs in the state, in the county. So some IRCs hired a executive director. And that executive director is responsible and is external and provides oversight to the work that is being done for commissions by the counties. I mean, all of these counties are expected by law to support the commissions. And so so there's an example, you have an executive director, another commission may have a chief of staff. And again, it's a separate, independent individual external from the structure that is being that's being part of the IRC, so the county. And so what we're trying to do, because we are a commission and we work with the county staff, we want to just make sure that we can demonstrate that we are providing this sufficient oversight for 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 all of the operations that occur under our direction and that those operations are at our direction. Does that, does that answer your question?
Yeah, I think so. I guess another thing that kind of what is there anything that a standing committee could do that a treasurer couldn't and vice versa? You know, that's that's the other way to look at it. And so I don't know if you've thought that through yet or if that's still.
Committee could, I mean, standing committee basically could would operate as a mini, a mini IRC, except they can't make a decision without our approval. So so basically, you're upgrading your ad hoc committee to a permanent committee. Now, they could form, I believe, their own ad hoc committees within their organization. A treasurer, you know, perhaps, you know, could only do that by going through the IRC. So the treasurer could go to the IRC and say, hey, you know, we're realizing that the budget, you know, that that our expenditures have outpaced our budget. And and for these circumstances, we're going to have to go back to the county commissioner. And they could, the IRC could say, okay, we either need to reconvene the budget committee or start a new one. So those those are examples of how the standing committee would work versus what I want you to imagine, all of your conversations in your ad hoc are in a public meeting for a standing committee. And it's it's cumbersome, it's time consuming. And and in my mind, for what it's worth, if there's another option that doesn't cost us a lot of money and a lot of time, we might want to consider those. Spending a lot of money.
I also want to add on that topic of the standing committee. We also talked about the possibility of, you know, rather than having separate dates, like say, you know, one date that the standing committee meets, but to actually have it like before the actual regular IRC meeting so that the public, it's easier for the public to attend since those dates are already established. So that would could also potentially cut down on costs. But, you know, again, that's just an idea and open to discussion.
Okay, thank you for that good exchange. I have Commissioner Hanson, then Commissioner Serbin. Commissioner Diaz, you've you're feel free to weigh in, but you don't have requests to speak right now, correct?
Um, oh, sorry, I lowered my hand, but I I wanted to address something about the roles and responsibilities or just clarify that a little bit about the treasurer role.
Okay, why don't you go ahead, then Commissioner? It's okay. We'll go ahead because we're on that topic. And I'll beg Commissioner Hanson's and Commissioner Serbin's indulgence to just be patient for a minute longer. So Commissioner Diaz, please.
Yeah, so the way that I had looked at it was very similar to a company having, so you have a controller and you have a CFO, right? And so this person is sort of an executive level kind of, you know, CFO, if you will, of the IRC. Now, we have staff working to support us and collecting all those invoices. But this person, that in my mind, I had envisioned that they would receive these invoices, be the first, and then approve and then balance sort of the reconcile those expenses from the income and what was expended. Now, there's very many different definitions of treasurer, unfortunately. Because we're a unique body, that treasurer is not like a bookkeeper. Because we don't staff, you know, the county is paying the invoices. We don't pay the invoices. So we really, so CFO can also, I say treasurer, I guess, maybe treasurer may not be the right term. But in terms of looking at streamlining operations and making things more efficient, those are definitely things like policy oriented things that we really need to have in place. And that also involves oversight. So so I originally, I was trying to find definitions of what treasurer is and and it was very hard. So we kind of have to piece together what those roles and responsibilities are and what makes sense for the type of situation that we're in. And so I don't know if that kind of clarifies a little bit to kind of put it in perspective or kind of compare it to how a company operates, its finances are a nonprofit. But that's kind of how I was looking at it.
No, it helps. Thank you for that. Commissioner Hanson, then Commissioner Serbin.
My feeling is that we need to look at how we use our regular meetings of the commission to the best advantage. We're already meeting and to be honest, it's most of what we do here is to be reported back after much of the nitty gritty and thinking on important topics has already been done before we hear about the recommendations. And while I understand that that's very important, I really would prefer to be more a part of the conversation all the way along whenever possible. And we've spent a lot of our meeting time being getting being educated on the subjects. But as time goes on, I would hope that the need for that would be reduced. And we would have more time to discuss topics like budget, where everyone is participating, where everyone who wants to, I mean, you mentioned that a standing could be committee could include any commissioner that wants to. Well, we should all want to, I think. And can we better use the time we already have and not ask the public to show up with another meeting? But make these meetings more nuts and bolts. So that's, that's really not a question. That's my comment.
No, of of very useful comments, I think, and touches also on the legal commitments we have, both for the IRC to be the sole decision making body in this process as well as to be as public and transparent as possible. So.
By not being able to weigh in on the process as we go along and only just coming in to be informed and then to vote makes me less less capable commissioner. And it does not demonstrate that all of us are a part of this independent process.
Thank you for that. Commissioner Serbin, then Commissioner Dustal.
So I'm, I'd like to understand what would be the difference between the first option, which is the, I guess, a more robust ad hoc committee versus the third option, which is creating a standing committee. I'm I'm having, I'm having difficulty thinking of what the distinction is between those two bodies.
That's fair. That's that's a fair question. And now I'm looking back at my presentation saying I should have done it this way. But I'm, and I'm always, always happy to take questions and clarify issues that are confusing. So the ad hoc committee by nature is is a temporary committee. It's a short term timeframe with a very specific purpose. And and so when we set up our budget ad hoc committee, we set it up with those three purposes. And we got about halfway through and we realized, oh, boy, this other piece we should have included, but because we didn't, we then said, okay, what are we going to do to try to try to try to get that piece also accomplished, right? Because this is something that we need to do, right? Or we need to decide that we need to do it. So the ad hoc committee would be a temporary. Again, if we if we expanded, either expanded our purpose or we could even start another ad hoc committee on additional financial oversight. I mean, we literally could do that too. But it would be for a limited purpose and it would likely be to establish what the procedures are that ultimately would be created through, you know, the treasurer's position. Now, also in full, full agreement with the IRC. So the treasurer. Were you asking the difference between the treasurer and the ad hoc or the standing committee and the ad hoc? Standing committee and ad hoc?
Correct.
Okay, so standing committee. So so the ad hocks continue, the ad hoc continues just like all the other ad hocks we have do. They're limited. The standing committee is a permanent committee. So if something comes up in six months, nine months, 12 months, they're there to address it if it's within their frame of responsibility. And but they have to do it in a public meeting. So so it would have to be discussed in a public setting.
Um, I guess maybe let me ask the question a different way. What is the limited scope of the ad hoc committee such that it is an ad hoc committee and not a standing committee?
So for us, we had our, so when when the motion was made to establish the ad hoc committee, there were three purposes that were given to it to resolve. And that's what we're now working through the third of the three. And this this financial oversight piece, if you will, is a fourth or additional item. And the question that we need to resolve is, you know, we know we need to address it. How are we going to address it? And that's what we're trying to to define. I think the struggle for the ad hoc personally is time commitment. And we're all committed to other head hocks as well. And we're getting a little what some people are getting virtual meeting fatigue. We're getting ad hoc fatigue. And I think, you know, if that's a fair fair assessment for me to say on behalf of the three of us, we we could do it. And if that were the the direction of the IRC, that's great. The problem that I see is that it doesn't really address the future need for revamping or re for updating or changing, let's say, a budget or developing an additional procedure that we discover we need. We still have to come, then then the IRC would have to recognize the need. We'd have to decide how we want to handle it, you know. And that could be yet again, another ad hoc or or some other mechanism. So there's, there's, if you want to look at the difference between the two, it's what is, one is permanent. Standing committee will be there to address issues that come up in its scope. The ad hoc addresses the immediate question in a much shorter timeframe. Once the question is resolved, they disband.
Commissioner Servin has that addressed.
I'm sorry, what would the question be that would be posed to the ad hoc such that once it's answered, there would be disbanded?
Well, so for example, let's say in six months, somebody says, we need a new procedure for dealing with, you know, maybe an invoice, you know, invoicing structure that we didn't address. Or we we find out that we do need to hire an external legal. And how much is that going to cost? What, you know, maybe it's more than the $50,000. So then we have to go back to a budget. So it really could be anything to me that. So it really could be anything to me that would be within the framework of the, the financial, additional financial oversight. Could be budget, could be procedures. You know, it's hard to tell, but there are, certainly there are things that could come up between now and the end of our terms that need to have, you know, need to have research done and problem solved.
Okay, thank you. I'll, I'll take that into consideration and raise my hand again if I need more clarification. Appreciate it.
And Commissioner Serbin, I think it's a good point because it also gets to the question of how long an ad hoc is around. If we had a revised mission for this ad hoc, we would need to consider as a commission when and how to make clear that they're an ad hoc commission, committee, and how long they would be around, which, exactly what you asked, what's this specific purpose? I could see within the ad hoc's existing mandate to do what would amount to an exit report, to just define what they see a little further beyond what they've just told us today. But they couldn't go much further than that. And we, we as a commission, we need to consider, do we want to test that ad hoc with a slightly different or expanded mandate? Do we want to raise it through the normal procedures for further consideration? How we define, for instance, the roles and responsibilities of treasurer? That's, that's what I see procedurally. All right. Commissioner Dostal and then co-Vice Chair Garcia. And I don't think I've seen any other hands beyond those two. Good. So Commissioner Dostal, please.
Chairman, I just want to say that I lowered my hand because I had a lot to say, but it wasn't a question and I still don't have a question. But I really did want to say this before we get to your straw poll and specifically because I want to reiterate what Commissioner Hanson mentioned. I am really concerned that we are getting very far away from our core mission. Our mission is to draw fair and legally sound redistricting lines. Our purview is not to check individual invoices. And so for me, I mean, I just feel like all these committees, not all the committees, but to form committee after committee, you know, maybe that's fine now while people have time, but there are, as we've heard, committee fatigue. And I think that's completely fair because I know there are people who are on multiple, multiple committees. And so I really think we need to rethink all the committees and rethink that right now we don't have any census data. So there is time for us to spend our meetings on training and things like that. But when we get our census data, we need to focus on that. And if we have 10 ad hoc committees, I mean, we just, it just, we lose focus. Another thing I wanted to say about the, some things that were said about our independence. I think I have a fundamental difference of opinion on what that means. To me, independence does not mean that we have to look over staff constantly. I think, I mean, what that means is that we're independent from the people who are going to be voted in by the district lines we draw. And that's the county board supervisors. I don't think there's any problem and I'm completely comfortable with staff coming in once a month as we originally planned and giving us a budget update. I'm comfortable with that and I would prefer that. I don't, I don't think there's a need for a standing committee for sure. And I think if we want another ad hoc committee, we do that as we go, as the need arises, not to just, you know, continually re-up it. So those are my thoughts. Like I said, I just wanted to make sure I said that before, you know, for people to consider before we do the straw poll. And I appreciate the hard work that the committees have done. I just really want to rethink how we use our meetings, our actual public meetings as Commissioner Hanson mentioned. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for the opening and closing comments because I really do appreciate the flexibility. I don't want any of us to be slaves to rules of procedure because frankly, it's more important to have productive discussion. And I think those points are very well taken. I also want to again remind that it's good to have gotten to this point because the ad hoc committee has in effect illuminated a lot of options. And I think that's good. But as you were saying, Commissioner Hanson, Commissioner Serbin, that may be the fulfilling the requirement that we had for the ad hoc committee. And maybe it's time to move on to something else, especially given, I don't mean to prejudice any discussion or decision, but especially given the decision-making responsibility and the sole responsibility that lies with the full commission to make these decisions. Everything else has to make that more efficient or it's not worth the time and attention. All right. I'm not even sure I'm going to call a straw poll, but I want to think about it while paying very careful attention to co-Vice Chair Garcia. But we'll probably move to discussion about what to do about all this right after her remarks. Co-Vice Chair Garcia.
Okay, I'll, I'll try to be brief and I appreciate all the comments that have been made so far. And especially Commissioner Hanson and Dostal, who reminded, I think it reminded me, maybe perhaps all of us about the fact that we should all be interested in, in using the commission, our, our meeting time and, and all of us sort of being involved in getting these budget updates. I'm wondering if, if technically this ad hoc committee has actually already done the work that it was charged to do because it reviewed the legal contract. A, B, it came back to us with the recommendation for a revision to the budget. And then C, the third thing that it was supposed to do is to make a recommendation for a standing committee. And what I've heard is that they're, they've made that decision. And they've said, no, we, we shouldn't have a standing committee and they've given us their reasons for that. Then there, you know, I, I, I do understand why they are raising the issue of additional oversight. But as Commissioner Hanson pointed out, perhaps we commissioners as a full IRC can, can provide that, can do that more effectively going forward now that we've had a little bit of, a little bit of experience actually working as an IRC. And, and I, I know that some of this maybe comes from the fact that early on, you know, there were some things that, some decisions that got made or some, some things that happened that the IRC didn't find out about until, until afterwards. And I think what we want to avoid is continually or continuing to be in a situation where decisions are being made that are really decisions that should be made by the commission, but that are being made and, and we're only being informed of it after the fact and we can't. And we don't really have the ability to actually weigh in and decide on things that, that we should be deciding on. And that, that is perhaps the oversight that, the additional oversight that, that we're referring to. But I think that can be fixed by us as a group. But Mike, I'll go back since we're supposed to be asking clarifying questions. Have they actually, has this committee actually already in fact completed the work that they were charged to do?
I'm going to jump in for a second. And I do want to let the members of the committee speak, but I, I think, co-Vice Chair Garcia, you make a good point. I think they have fulfilled their responsibilities under the mandate with the possible exception that it would be fair to ask them for their final set of recommendations, given this conversation because they hadn't heard from the full commission. That's just where I am procedurally. Co-Vice Chair Katerina or other members of the ad hoc commission, please.
Can, I'm sorry, I forgot there was, so two things I want. First of all, I want to thank that, I, I know how much time and effort that this ad hoc committee has spent getting us to this point and I, I want to acknowledge that and thank them for that. And I can fully understand why they, they might be experiencing some ad hoc committee fatigue. But the other point I wanted to make is that they mentioned bylaws in two, you know, with having to do with additional oversight. One with expanding their duties to develop policies and procedures and amendments to the bylaws and the treasurer position. And I actually think if there is another ad hoc committee that needs to be formed, it is a bylaws ad hoc committee. Because there are many things about our bylaws that need to be strengthened. And if we're going to work on, and it's not just this. So I would actually rather see us form a, a bylaws ad hoc committee and, and get those right. Because we, we, we approved a very sort of bare bones set of bylaws that, that as we're going through this, are finding that they aren't really answering the questions for us that we need to have answered. And that, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Co-Vice Chair Katerina.
Yeah, if you don't mind. So thank you, Commissioner Garcia. So um, to answer your question, technically, we, we have fulfilled the requirements of our purpose. However, and I don't want to use the word legally, but I believe that we make the recommendation and, and the commission recognizes it in some way. And that's usually done through a motion and we don't have a motion today for this item. So I would, I would push it, put it back to, if you don't mind, Marguerite or Hillary. Have we completed our requirements? Or do we actually need to have a motion at the next meeting that would either approve our recommendation, I mean, would accept our recommendation? I'm not exactly sure how, how it would be worded. Or, or, or look at one of these other options. So, so, so I guess that's, that's back to you. Are we finished or do we need to, to officially vote to finish, I guess, in the future?
To address that question, I, I don't, legally, I think you could go either way. It, it's, you know, there's not a clear legal requirement that you, the ad hoc committee remain formed until there is a motion before the commission. However, just for ease of process, it may make sense to do so until it would be a, a more finite endpoint on the commission, on the, I'm sorry, on the ad hoc committee's mandate to wait until the commission resolves this matter and, and votes to either pursue one of these options or not.
Okay. Good. Let me offer a suggestion. Would commissioners, would there be objection to in effect taking this back? And I would ask the co-Vice Chairs, the ad hoc committee, staff and council to think it through and for staff to coordinate with those elements to put together a report that would either include a motion for action or present an option within existing authorities, given the tenor of discussion today. Commissioners, of course, would we, would still have the right to make a motion to take action either on these recommendations or in some other idea. But I'm thinking rather than go through a straw poll or anything like that, it might be easier to just refine what we're asking the commission to do a little bit more. Commissioner Ponce.
Thank you. I, I, I think that the ad hoc committee has done a great job and have fulfilled their mission. I think the options that they've given us deserves a straw poll. And based on the results of that straw poll, we vote to get a quorum or not to get a quorum and then move forward a different, another meeting to consider the other options. But, you know, you've given, they've given us three options and they are pretty clear and distinct. And my mind is already set on which option is best based on comments from Commissioner Dosto, Katerina and others and to get us moving forward. So I, I really am in favor of the straw poll and then moving forward based on that straw poll. Over.
Is there objection to a straw poll? We'll do it quick, I promise. Seeing that, good. So let me ask.
First option is?
There, there are, we can do this one of two ways. I don't want to just have a straw poll on the three options unless it's understood that if there's insufficient support for all three, we're going to take up, we'll, we'll ask staff to look at another way to proceed within existing authorities. Another way to do it would be to take one straw poll to see if there is interest in any of the options. But I don't want to have two polls if we don't need, if we can get away with one. So for now, they have commissioners, can I just see hands? Are commissioners ready to make a decision on each of the three options by straw poll? Just for informal, whether they want to have an inch, that's good enough. Okay. So let's go down the list as it currently exists. Could I see a show of hands for interest in pursuing, I'll put it that way, the expansion of the role of the ad hoc committee to include developing processes for additional oversight? Okay, that's, I see no hints. Could I see a show of hands for the possible, of interest?
Commissioner Ponce had his hand up.
No, I'm sorry. If that, is that option one that you just read?
Yes.
Then my hand is up for.
Okay, I'm very sorry for that. So Commissioner Ponce was interested. Any others interested in option one? I want to make sure we're not railroading anything. Okay, duly noted. The possible creation of a treasurer role. Can I see a show of hands of interest in pursuing that option? This is number two. I see three. Four, Commissioner Kugliak was at a hand? Yeah, okay, four. Could I see a show of hands then on the possibility of a standing committee? Okay. Not seeing a quorum on any of those options. My inclination, given the flavor of the discussion, is to go ahead and ask for a staff report. But I want to give those who voted for option one or option two a chance to voice their opinion. Any comments?
Yeah, so Frank Ponce, yeah, option one. You know, I'm going, I'm going back to the staff responsibilities and oversight by the commission. If we give the staff additional responsibilities of what our expectations are and let them report out to us and read out to us what those expectations are and their roles and responsibilities, I think that meets the intent of what we're trying to do in providing additional oversight to the financial budget process. So I'm all in favor of option one. And in my opinion, that just moves it forward.
Okay, duly noted. Thank you. Other comments?
I wanted to just comment that our original mission did not include oversight, which is why option one is worded the way it is to expand the ad hoc role. Now, I'm personally, I'm one of those that I'm, I wouldn't like to continue doing the ad hoc process, but if we have to to work that out and, and define what that oversight is, that's fine. It's just I want to make it clear, it wasn't originally part of the mission of this ad hoc.
Yeah, let me be clear. I, I don't want the ad hoc committee to be a standing committee that goes in, goes on indefinitely. My vision is that once they identify the additional roles and responsibilities and we accept those additional roles and responsibilities and they have been pushed over to the staff to execute, the ad hoc committee no longer exists because they're meeting the expectations of the commission. And so it doesn't continue because it would be a standing committee then. It moves from an ad hoc to a standing committee. I don't think that's necessary. I think expanding the roles and responsibilities for the staff as far as oversight and reporting back to us, I think that meets the expectations and the intent for what we expect the staff to do.
Yeah, before I turn to Commissioner Serbin, I, the points are well taken. Unless council or staff tell me it's completely objectionable and wrong, I'm willing to have a liberal reading of the last item in the original purpose of the budget ad hoc committee to allow them to remain engaged between now and May 27th. I.e., in considering the creation of a standing committee and return to the commission for consideration, I'd be willing to say that consideration includes one step of dialogue. Because I wouldn't expect the ad hoc committee to only have one shot at the commission to talk about it. They've done some great work. They've kept us informed to get us to this point. And this has been their first opportunity to really brief things at a concrete level. Now, I'm making an assumption there about the ad hoc committee and I'm going to ask them if they would feel comfortable operating for one or two more meetings before the May 27th meeting to help. provide the full commission with the recommendation on the way forward. So I'll ask them in a moment for that, but before that, let me turn to Commissioner Serbin.
So, um, I guess I just wanted to clarify, when we're talking about an adult committee, expanding the ad hoc committee's scope of work, do we mean that we would want it to do what Commissioner Pons had mentioned, which is identify additional roles and responsibilities for the for staff in providing a, giving us oversight and reporting to us about financial our our financial position? Is that what, is that what the expanded role of the ad hoc committee would be?
We we would need to define that and have an actual motion on it. But I would be willing to let the ad hoc committee make a recommendation beyond what we have today because it would have to be pointed, I think, because they're not recommending a standing committee, we would want them to define that expanded mandate as how long would they need or what exactly which kind of roles and responsibilities are looking at, particularly with regard to whether it's an individual commissioner uh, or something involving staff and the existing officers. But that's really a question for the ad hoc. And again, I just want to make sure we're not violating the terms of reference for them. Ms. Gibson, did you want to say something? I just saw you come on.
Well, I I just wanted to clarify what I think you were saying, Chair Bame, is that since there's, there will be no motion on the table today, that the ad hoc committee would just would just stay formed for one more meeting to continue to work within their current mandate to provide a recommendation prior to that motion. And if that's the case, of course, council and staff can, um, to work with the ad hoc committee to, um, you know, look at the what the mandate of the ad hoc is and figure out ways to work within it.
Informed by today's discussion and by the ad hoc's own discussion of why a standing committee might not meet the needs, but what additional steps could be taken to meet the needs of oversight? All right, I've got Commissioner Dostal and then Co Vice Chair Garcia, and then we probably either need to go to a motion to wrap this up. But let me, oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Hanson as well. So, I'm sorry. Okay, so Commissioner Dostal, Commissioner Hanson and Co Vice Chair Garcia.
Just a little confused about what we're still discussing because I thought they gave us their report. We said, yeah, we're not doing one, we don't have enough interest in one, two or three. So I guess I'm a little confused about why we're, I mean, aren't we done?
I- in effect, I'm asking, I I'm just trying to make sure the commission does not have any objection to the ad hoc committee meeting one or two more times between now and May 27th as part of the preparation for a discussion on oversight on the 27th. Is that, does that respond?
I I'm still confused. I thought we decided that, I mean, it sounded like there was kind of some consensus around the entire commission will provide oversight by having the staff come in. Is that not?
I I I think that's good. What I'm asking for is would the commission be willing for the ad hoc to be in touch with staff as an ad hoc to make sure any clarifying questions are addressed? I just want to give them that opportunity, if that's okay.
Thank you.
Okay, is is that all right, though?
Yeah, I just didn't, I was, I I wasn't clear on that. So thank you.
Sure, no, it's a fair question. It's good. Commissioner Hanson.
I just wanted to reiterate, the only option that we have when issues come up is not to ask the staff to take responsibility for it. The other option is for us to take responsibility. And that's what I think we're missing. I mean, like Commissioner Dostal said about when we needed more information about about the budget, we asked for a monthly report. We've been getting the monthly report and that seemed to satisfy the issue. So I just want to remind us that it's up to us to do these things, not hand it off to someone else.
Absolutely.
Or staff.
Right. And and please, miss, don't misunderstand anything I've said, and I don't think anything any commissioner has said. We do have oversight right now. As far as I'm concerned, the commission is exercising oversight. The question is, can we do that more effectively, efficiently and accurately?
Yes.
When we ha- what I'm really asking is, on May 27th, let's answer that question by saying either yes, what we're doing now is fine, or no, we need to augment a little bit in some way, shape or form, and here's how we're going to do it.
Right. Okay.
Sure. Seeing no other requests for comment and checking one more time with the ad hoc, with staff and with council for any last closing comments. Very good. So, uh, plan on another discussion of this and I'll ask staff to start thinking and work with us on how we best prepare the way ahead on that discussion. Thank you all for your patience. Thanks for asking clarifications and getting this straight. We are moving on to agenda item nine. That's an update from the Legislative Ad hoc Committee and discussion and possible approval as an action item of a proposing amendments to California Senate Bill 594 authored by Senator Steve Glaser. As commissioners will recall, the receipt of census data has been significantly delayed while our deadline to adopt the redistricting map remains December 15th. SB 594 was introduced in February to try and address the impact on local redistricting efforts. And of course, at our last meeting, we adopted a resolution to support of the bill. That resolution and an accompanying cover letter was transmitted to Sacramento on Thursday, April 29th. The item before the question today is a continuation of the ad hoc committee's task to develop legislative or other recommendations regarding the timeline for redistricting. I think you all remember the full for fourfold purpose of that ad hoc committee. I'd be happy to repeat it later if we need to. But for today, the ad hoc committee is presenting specific concepts for amendments as amendments to the bill itself that are intended to assist and help our commission in doing its work. These include, first, extending the IRC map adoption deadline up to as latest January 31st, 2022. Second, permitting the IRC to use the California statewide database user-friendly version of census legacy format data, PL94 data, to produce draft maps starting 21 days after the release after its release by the statewide database. And three, requiring the IRC to update all draft maps using the official redistricting database, which includes the allocation of incarcerated persons when it is released by California statewide database and use that work when they are released and use that data for all future mapping. Let me now turn to Commissioner Russ for clarification of everything I just said. Commissioner Russ, please.
Good luck. Uh, thank you, Chair Bame. Um, thanks for just kind of reminding us of our of our purpose. Uh, I I won't go go through it anymore, but but I do want to talk about SB 594, which addresses the California election code, and that is the vehicle for obtaining this relief from the compressed timeline we find ourselves in to come up with a redistricting map and while, so at the same time, obtaining robust public input. Now, we've already had some relief proffered in an amendment to the bill where the adoption date of a map is the date of the resolution. So there has been some some benefit already, but there is, we're we're looking for for more relief. Did I have the next slide, please? Well, the ad hoc committee has been looking for ways to gain back time for public input, which has, which was lost due to the delays in the census public law 94 data release. And this this slide shows their latest information we have from the statewide database. The release of public law 94 of of legacy and legacy format is expected on August 16th. But it's not the format originally intended. And but the statewide database is promised user-friendly database seven days after the census release or August 23rd. It 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 can be used by the public to look at current demographics and by us to look at current demographics, evaluate communities of interest and start drawing maps. However, it will not include the demographics of incarcerated individuals. Current election code stipulates that the IRC must wait 21 days after release of official statewide database before publishing draft maps. Unless that date is less than 90 days from the adoption deadline. In that case, the waiting period is reduced to seven days. Well, the current date is September 23rd. Uh, and and so therefore it does reduce the waiting period from 21 days to seven days. You you almost, you you really need a chart here to 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 kind of follow these dates and Commissioner Inman's going to give that to us at the, uh, after I give. Well, when we present options, um, these these timeline constraints and possible remedies is what we want to show. The ad hoc committee has, uh, has, uh, next slide, please. Okay, the ad hoc committee has caught us with a number of stakeholders shown on this slide and summarized in a report that you received in your agenda packet. We plan to meet with San Diego County's four state senators and seven state assembly members to make them aware of the difficulties the current timeline presents in obtaining robust public input. But we need to do this as soon as possible as SB 94, 594 is expected to pass out of committee and go to the floor in early or mid or early to mid June. But some of the comments that we've received, which were consistent across many of the stakeholders, was that everyone agrees that we need more time. Therefore, we heard loud and clear, particularly from, uh, uh, the staff director of the Senate Elections uh, and Constitutional Amendments Committee, therefore put forth a proposed date. And that's what we're, that's what we want to do. Senator Glazer himself has has a desire to extend the deadline from what we understand. Also, good governance groups such as Common Cause and the League of Women Voters are are most encouraging to allow for as much time for public input as possible. And they and we are concerned about the holiday period between Thanksgiving and New Year's as a time of reduced concern and therefore reduce public input, especially in light of this being the first post-COVID holiday period. Another thing we've heard loud and clear, uh, certainly from our registrar of voters, they need 30 days to process new boundaries for establishing precincts. We talked with, uh, with the interim, um, registrar and her staff. And we're informed that these need to be established by February 2nd of 2022. However, a- and and of course, 30 days prior to that would be, uh, January 2nd, uh, 2022. So a bit of a, I'd be a little over, um, two weeks of of extension there. But they did indicate that since their processes were not sequential and many are in parallel, they could provide some relief by hiring extra staff. So I I kind of like to paraphrase it that, um, the registrar voters did not have what they heard from us, really didn't give them a heart attack, it just gave them heartburn. But they would rather have more time than less time, as all of us will. Uh, the other thing was that there could be unique fixes for San Diego County. However, uh, joint proposals would be useful. And of course, we've been talking with the LA County CRC. Unique fixes are legislative amendments that obviously would only pertain to the county of San Diego. It's important to note that these are one-time changes to the law for only this redistricting process due to the impacts of COVID and the census delays. So the redistricting process would revert to the original legislation in subsequent years. And then the next slide. So really, our recommendations are are that, uh, we we want to, um, extend the IRC map adoption deadline. And two, we want to, uh, permit the IRC to use California uh, statewide database user-friendly version of census legacy data beginning the 21 days after the release on August 23rd. In other words, we could begin on September 13th. And I realize all those dates, it's it gets really confusing unless unless you have a program. And so Commissioner Inman is going to take over to try to lead us through the, some of the timeline scenarios.
So I'll start by doing my, uh, breathing exercise here just to get a, get in the right mode. Uh, next slide, uh, please. So this is the, uh, chart that lays out the options. And what you're really focusing on there are the rows that, uh, are labeled, uh, first draft maps. That's when we, as an IRC, can begin drafting maps and circulating them in public. And then also the map adoption date. So those are the two rows that we're looking at here. The first column is the current state of affairs that we, uh, that we currently have. And if you read down the first row, that's when census releases the first version of PL94. And they've said that they're going to do that by August 16th. The next two rows are what's going to be done by the California statewide database. The first one is this is new, but they weren't doing this before, but given the delays and such, they now have decided to release the, uh, the census version of PL94 in a user-friendly format that can be used for redistricting. And by user-friendly format, what that means is they're going to produce essentially a big, think of it as a big Excel database. Uh, it's a big spreadsheet. The rows in that spreadsheet are blocks. That's a census definition. And then the columns are counts of population, number of people by various race and ethnicity categories. So it's, it's a big Excel spreadsheet. For the county of San Diego, that Excel spreadsheet would have roughly, I think it's 25 thousand rows. So there's 25 to 30,000 blocks in San Diego County. And then the number of columns is probably on the order of 60 to 70 columns of data. So that's what's going to be produced and released on August 23rd by the California statewide database. Once that's released, that's really the 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 starting gun. It's it's go. You know, the gun goes off. People are going to pull that data off and they're going to start crunching numbers. You can pull that into GIS databases and start mapping it. You could pull it into analytics packages and start, um, looking at communities of interest to figure out, you know, whether, how how, uh, various minority groups are represented within various geographies and areas. So that's really the s- the starting gun for the, for this whole process. That's, that's what's going to happen when, uh, that database gets released. The next row there is the official redistricting database that Commissioner Russ was talking about. And right now, we're actually tied to using that data and all of our dates are actually synced off of when that database is released on September 22nd. Um, so the current state then, after September 22nd, we can start producing draft maps seven days after that. And that has to do with the amount of days for public review. So there's a step function here. It's either 07 or 21. And so this puts us within the window where that waiting period would be seven days. And so that, uh, that sets us up, uh, for 77 days of public review under our current situation with a map adoption dated, uh, December 15th. So the first proposal is to push the map adoption date out from December 15th to January 31st. And you see that that increases number of days for public review to 110 or by 33. So the whole goal here is to make sure that we have sufficient time for public review and input into this process. And that's, that's our whole objective here is finding ways to do that. Um, so pushing it out to Jan 31 clearly does that. We have a whole nother month, essentially 33 days. Uh, the other thing is this moves us off that end of December, mid-December timeframe to be trying to adopt final maps when, you know, it's going to be hard to get the public to focus. I mean, people are going to be focused on the holidays, their families, um, you know, and and all the things that are happening there. And, you know, it's, you know, we've heard it from, uh, the people that we've talked to, the, uh, the comments from various interested parties that they believe it's just really going to be hard to do the work that we need to do and get the sufficient input that we need to, unless we move that data. So please go on to the next slide. And in this next slide, so the only change here in this next slide is we are talking about And in this next slide, so the only change here in this next slide is we are talking about changing when that waiting period starts. So we still have the same map adoption date, December fifteen, so we're not changing that. What we are changing is the first day that we'll be able to look at draft maps. And if we key the waiting period to go off when the gun goes off is is I'm standing at. You know, when the starting gun goes off, which is August twenty third. Then uh we're now when that step function instead of the seven-day waiting period, we go to a twenty-one-day waiting period. But we still can start having that public dialogue and looking at draft maps on September thirteen. So that's gaining um uh time over the original date of September twenty nine. If you look at this scenario, we gain sixteen days uh uh more of public review. Total days for public review is ninety-three. And if you would want to just go to the last slide, you'll see everything um altogether here. And it actually, we got the red formatting here, I've dropped the red formatting earlier, but at any rate, so this is if you do both. And so this is, this is essentially what we would like to do. So essentially, we're giving us more time on the front end because we're changing. Uh the trigger date for the waiting period. And we're giving us more time on the back end, so we're moving out the map adoption date. And so we've increased, we've almost doubled in this scenario. Uh number of days for uh public review over currently what we're, what we're up against gone from seventy-seven to a hundred and forty days. And uh we've increased uh um uh. By forty-nine. Doesn't seem quite right, did I mess up my math? At any rate, um bear with me here. Um but we uh we're, we're adding on a month at the end. For uh additional uh additional review and we're adding on uh several weeks at the front end. Uh by uh uh by changing the uh the trigger date for uh looking at draft maps. So that, that is uh a summary uh of kind of the proposals that we have. And uh the, I guess we can move on to the motion. Or do what I go back to you, uh Chairman at this moment before we show the motion.
Um we, you certainly can show it now, I I want to give you both the chance to talk about it if you want to. Uh and we will circle back when we're ready to consider a motion, well.
Uh I would say one thing, I guess if I, if I could about the motion, so the motion is in three parts here, part one, two, and three. Uh the uh the thing to understand is um part one, that is where we're extending the deadline. Part two and three actually go together. So uh so the first part of it is to change the uh trigger date. To uh when the uh statewide database releases the user-friendly version of the file. But we also want to make it clear that when the official redistricting database is released. That we revert back to that file, we're not simply going to use that file in uh perpetuity. And uh so that's uh. Uh those, those two would go hand in hand, uh two and three would uh would go hand in hand. So if you want to go back to the table, that's probably the most useful place to go to.
Yeah, and Commissioner, and that, that forty-nine, actually, I think that's sixty-three, sixty, uh, okay, I think that's sixty-three.
Thank you, okay. I I claim to be a statistician, that means I have tolerances on any numbers I publish, so.
There's that strong finish coming.
There you go.
Um commissioners, if, eh eh first Commissioner Inman and Commissioner Russ, any other comments before we move to clarifying questions?
Um I just want to comment that Senate Bill five nine four, as of yesterday, was on the Senate floor. Um and I'm not sure if it passed the Senate floor, it was on third reading. So um I know that the, there were other ad hoc committee members that had a uh had met with uh Mr. Hyde Horn yesterday. So I just wanted to get an update on where the bill's at.
He, he uh didn't, he didn't actually mention anything about that. He, he's the um reiterated the timeline that he explained to us in our first meeting with him. So I'm still looking at sort of early to mid-June.
Okay, so he's probably talking when the bill's on the assembly.
Yeah.
Hi, okay.
So two comments I wanted to make, um if I can remember them. Uh one is that, yeah, one is that we're, um I want to, I want to emphasize that we're asking for an extension of the deadline. Up to January thirty-first. With the actual date that will be uh proposed is. Is still not clear, but up to January thirty-first, we don't know exactly where we're going to land. I, I, but I think it's, I think it's okay to say, I think it's prudent to mention to the commissioners. That it's not likely we're going to go all the way up to January thirty-first, but we're, we're asking for that flexibility. And the second point I wanted to make is that um. The statewide, uh the third row, the official redistricting database. Is. Some groups are are still very focused on um that date being the trigger date. As opposed to the August twenty-third date, which is what we are recommending and what we're proposing. And the reason for that is not only because the, um it actually doesn't have to do with the fact that the prison, the. Uh incarcerated persons are reali- that, that's where the um reallocation of um incarcerated persons. Uh will be included in that data set, but it's also where the information um about. Uh Voting Rights Act and Section two um. Um that, that data set about voting patterns, minority uh voting patterns and majority voting patterns. Um will become available. But we still believe that um it is um wise and a good idea to try and and. Move the trigger, the, the, the trigger date, if you will, back to August twenty-third, but I wanted to clarify that.
Very good. Let me open the floor now for further clarifying questions. I'll also ask counsel and staff to feel free to weigh in. Um including on the point Commissioner Diaz raised, but on other points as well as they like. I'll beg the commission's indulgence because with the split screen, it takes me an extra moment. Uh to look for hands and look for speakers, but I have co-Vice Chair Katerina, and I don't think anyone else right at the moment, so please go ahead.
Uh first, this is fabulous, um I've been dying to see this data. You know, because of all these different pieces and I love how you made it work and fit together. And really focus on the item that's actually the most important, well, it's one of the most important, and that is. How many days the publics are going to be able to review these draft maps? Or how many days are going to be available for the public to review these draft maps? And I see this grouping of numbers, I'm just curious for a frame of reference, if you know. In the original law, how many days were, were allocated?
Hundred and thirty-seven.
I don't know.
Hundred and thirty-seven.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, a hundred and fifty-seven?
Thirty-seven.
Hundred and thirty-seven would be days for public review?
Mm-hmm, in the original legislation, yeah. And maybe Marguerite and Hillary can check me on that, but I'm, I'm pretty sure I remember that number.
I would like to defer to legal counsel on that question because I thought it was a different number, sorry.
Oh, Sonia, what was your number?
I thought it was, we were talking about one hundred and seventy-four days, but that's um.
No, that's, that's the number of days from the election day. It's election day minus a hundred and seventy-four is when um we have to adopt a map by. And that's what the current legislation says, that's, that's. Does that make sense? So if election day is June eighth, the primary, a hundred and seventy-four days before that. Um is when a map um is supposed to be adopted by in the current legislation. But days for public um review was a hundred, it was four and a half months, a hundred and thirty-seven.
Not seeing anyone else, a- any other commissioners uh asking clarifying question. Marguerite, do you have any clarifications you want to add to the discussion?
No, I think that the discussion is um a good one. I, I think this has just been incredible work. I do want to just uh mention uh the concern that Commissioner Garcia brought up. They using the user-friendly PL data as proposed. In as one of the options, uh may not have in it the racial data. Um, the racial data is in a separate data set. It's in the American Community Survey. And I believe one of the requirements of uh the RFP. Is that the demogra- the demographic consultant be able to marry the data sets. And um I believe that that is possible and common. There are some differences in that the ACS is in the twenty-ten census data. Uh whereas the PL data will be in twenty-twenty census uh geography. But they are not going to be radically different. But I think the key thing is, is that as soon as the official data is out. And those differences are massaged. The commission under this proposal will proceed with the official data. So it's not that this is just to get initial maps out there. Uh that will be uh marked as preliminary.
Marguerite, could I just ask, and I'll, I'll ask members of the ad hoc at the same time. In that marrying up of data that's required of the demographer under the RFP. That would require as well marrying it up under all legal requirements, including the Voting Rights Act, correct?
Absolutely.
Good, okay.
So in, uh so uh. In the data that actually is going to be released by uh Census on August sixteen. And then also by the statewide database, there um are actually uh. Census tables, P one, P two, P three, P four, and P five. And H one, so those are census definitions, jargon, apologize. Um but those refer to specific tables. And in the statewide version of the database, they are re- releasing the tables that have counts by race. And ethnicity, so there will be. Um in twenty-twenty block geographies, counts of population by. Um race and it's multiple racial combinations, so it's tables. Uh I, I don't have the table numbers specifically, but there will be racial data that can be used. What won't be there is the Voting Rights database, and so they won't have voting history. Um that's, or at least that's my understanding. So there will be information you can use to do some analysis of racial data without having to revert to the ACS data. Um solely as a source for that information.
For the clarification, Commissioner Ponce.
Thank you, uh this is great, uh water and information. I guess my concern is the utilizing the PL ninety-four data. Uh a little premature to start drawing the maps. Versus waiting for the official database, where they're calling the question, the confidence. Of what we are doing before we get to actually doing the work of drafting the first maps on. Uh on the third line, September thirteenth. Uh the, is there any advantage to using the PL ninety-five, the PL ninety-four instead of waiting for the official database? I mean, what do we lose and what do we gain by starting early, using that as a trigger, the PL ninety-four data as a trigger? Uh because I'm concerned, because I'm, I just heard mixed comments about what's in the different data sets. Uh whether it's Voting Rights Act information, are these different interest groups? And once we start calling the question, you know, the representation, we start calling in the question legitimacy of the initial drafts. And I just wouldn't want to do that in the essence of time.
I could uh offer uh some, some uh some background on that or or please. So it's very good question, and it's a question that uh the public is going to uh be very concerned about. Um they, obviously, we want to use data that is going to be appropriate in terms of representing on the ground. Um what these districts uh potentially could look uh could look like. And in terms of the PL ninety-four raw data, that will be out there. The only thing, the only way it's going to differ from what's released in the official redistricting database. Is the adjustments for incarcerated persons. So uh what, what that means is they're going to go and take everybody that's currently in a state prison. Figure out what uh area they live in, in California. And assign them to that area so that they can be appropriately counted. Within uh the right geography for purposes of apportionment and redistricting. So the PL ninety-four counts themselves within a specific um area, community of interest. Within uh San Diego County, for example, or even a supervisory district will differ. When you sum them up from those two sources, the differences are going to be fairly small though. Total incarcerated population is about a hundred and twenty-two thousand in uh California. And that's going to be reallocated across all of California, the numbers that come back into San Diego. Um you know, they will make some differences. Uh most likely not material differences in the counts. The main difference uh is, is uh the Voting Rights data. That uh will not be released in conjunction with the statewide database uh release of the user-friendly data. Uh so that information would not be available. Uh until uh September twenty-second, when the official release occurs. And that data is used uh to uh to look for adherence to Voting Rights Act or violations thereof. To make sure that minority populations have uh the ability to appropriately elect officials or represent their opinions. So that's the part that would be available. Um so, you know, in terms of getting a start on looking at what the current supervisory districts. Um um what their composition looks like, PL ninety-four is completely. Uh well, in my opinion, completely appropriate for that. And it, it's going to be used, once that data is released, people will look at it and start to do that analysis. Um in, in absence, it's, it's one of those things, in absence of any other information, you're going to use what you've got. And that's, that data is going to. Uh uh used, and so part of the assumption here is we want to be. Able to uh engage in those dialogues with, or engage in a dialogue with the public in a timely manner. And so if we're going to wait for the official release. Um after the official release, we have to go through a waiting period before we can engage in that dialogue. And so in this case, we're trying to front-load the process so that we can hit the ground running. And and kind of engage in that dialogue sooner in a meaningful way uh without uh impinging the process.
Thank you. On, so that, good, all right. Um we'll move to Commissioner Serbin. And failing to see any other hands, we'll then ask for a public comment, Commissioner Serbin, please.
So do I understand it correctly that we would then issue a initial draft map? Prior to the release of the minority voting data?
Actually, we could, yes.
Okay, and that's done because we're, we want, by releasing an initial draft map, we're doing that with the intent of just. In uh initiating a conversation, I guess, is.
Exactly, right, yeah. Kind of priming the pump, if you will, to get people thinking about what are the important issues? What are the scenarios, what are potential communities of interest, how do they look like? It, it's very important to look at that Voting Rights data and 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 make sure that the analysis is done. And there would be sufficient time to do that. Um you know, uh when, because we'll re-release all draft maps using the official data when it becomes available. This is just a way to get the pro- the, the discussion started, if you will, and to give people something. and to give people something concrete to work with, as opposed to just us sitting there thinking, yeah, that's very interesting. Thank you very much. Uh, you, you need to wait, please.
Thank you. That's, uh, I appreciate the work of the commission. It's, it's a ton of work, and you guys did an excellent job.
Yeah, and I, for what it's worth, I, I really appreciate the comments that linked uh the map drawing times to the public engagement times in the discussion Commissioner Serbin, Commissioner Man just had. I thi, I think it's worth keeping both sides of that activity in mind. All right, um, let me ask David if there are any requests from the public to speak on this item.
Thank you, Chair Bame. We did not receive requests to speak on this item prior to today's meeting, but if there are any members of the public who would like to address the commission, please raise your virtual hand now by clicking your raise hand button on Zoom. I'd be pressing star nine if you were dialing in by phone. We do have one request to speak, Mary Thompson. You'll have three minutes to address the board. Uh, the commission, uh, please begin by stating your name for the audio record.
My name is Mary Thompson, and I represent the League of Women Voters. And I want to congratulate uh the commission and the ad hoc commission, uh, committee for the initiative that they've shown in this. I want to hark back to a comment made earlier in this session with uh Commissioner Pons when he was concerned about the timeline that was presented in your educational slide deck, the timeline to educate the public on how to expect this whole process is going to unfold. And given the conversation that was just had about using preliminary data, the, you know, the legacy data, and then using that to make preliminary maps, and then moving into the precise data when available and how that is going to affect the map. I'm hoping that the um committee will consider addressing this um in the slide deck or in some way bringing this forward to the public's attention so that they can understand very clearly why this is being done and how it's going to affect the, the ultimate, uh, you know, uh, meeting the deadline with the accurate information when it's totally available. Thank you for considering that.
If any other members of the public would like to address the commission, you're welcome to raise a virtual hand at this time. Not seeing any further requests to speak. That concludes public testimony on this item.
Thank you, David, and thank you for the comments. Good discussion going on. All right. To discuss this item further, we'll need a motion. Uh, I'll ask staff to bring the motion up one more time. Thank you. Do we have a motion? Eh, eh, would someone move to promote, provide this motion as portrayed on the slide?
Second.
I saw Commissioner Hanson, second by Commissioner Russ. Very good. Um, let's go ahead and take it down for now. I, I with Commissioner's approval, because it's easier to sponsor discussion. Discussion. Commissioner Chen.
I just want to point out that we are, we're not determining how we're going to go about this. We're determining what we're going to ask permission to do and just to get the timelines changed. That's all.
Very fair point. Thank you for that. Other comments? Because we'll be proceeding to a vote without any other comments. Very good. David, I'll ask you to call the roll.
Thank you. I will begin with Chair Bame.
Hi.
Commissioner Diaz.
Hi.
Commissioner Chen.
Hi.
Commissioner Pons.
Hi.
Commissioner Serbin.
Hi.
Commissioner Brown.
Hi.
Commissioner Inman.
Hi.
Commissioner Hanson.
Hi.
Commissioner Larson.
Hi.
Commissioner Katerina.
Hi.
Commissioner Krugliak.
Hi.
Commissioner Dastal.
Hi.
Commissioner Garcia.
Hi.
Commissioner Russ.
Hi.
That motion is approved unanimously with all commissioners being present and voting aye.
Thank you very much, David. Thank you very much, commissioners. And again, thank you very much to the ad hoc committee. Great slides. Just to be clear, uh, the next step will be for the ad hoc committee to work with counsel, staff, and myself to develop some specific amendment language and transmitted in the appropriate format to Sacramento in the most effective and appropriate ways possible. Staff will keep commissioners advised as this process and supporting documentation move forward. We now move to the final item on today's agenda, item ten, a discussion of future agenda items. This is an opportunity for commissioners to discuss any items to be considered for future meetings beyond what we've already discussed. It's an informational item. There's no action proposed. Uh, but before we move to discussion, I do want to ask David if there are any requests from the public to.
There have been no requests in advance of the meeting, but if any member of the public would like to address the commission, please raise your virtual hand at this time. Not seeing any requests to speak. That concludes public comment on this item.
Very good. Uh, just to introduce things, I already have bylaws ad hoc committee is something to consider. And I have a great series of hands already raised. We will go with Commissioner Pons, co-vice chair Garcia, Commissioner Diaz, co-vice chair Katerina, Commissioner Krugliak. And that's where we are for now. So Commissioner Pons.
Uh, yes, this is a procedural issue. I think of all of the agenda items, the sequencing needs to be reconsidered. Of all of the items on the agenda, number six to me is the most important agenda item, and it came last, what we just went through. Uh, in my opinion, my humble opinion, number six was probably the least important, and that's the issue of, you know, um, public comments and, you know, public speaking. So if we can look at the agenda items in the future, when you have something like number nine that comes up that really impacts what we're gonna do, moving that to the front of the agenda and make that a discussion topic early on. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you for that. Co-vice chair Garcia. Co-vice chair Garcia, you're on mute.
I, I lowered my hand, thinking I was unmuting myself, sorry. Um, I don't know if these are actual future agenda items, but there are two questions I have, and um they are, we, we still do not have a community of interest tool on our website or a uh map drawing tool on our website, and I know they're available on other redistricting commission websites. And uh Common Cause has a uh COI, C O, a community of interest tool on, on theirs that perhaps we could link to, and the statewide um commission has a uh, map, line drawing, whatever map drawing tool. And I'm wondering, you know, if and when we're gonna provide that on our website.
Good. We'll ask staff to look into that. Thank you very much. Commissioner Diaz.
Yes, um, thank you. I, uh, a current theme during this meeting uh was the Voting Rights Act. And I know that's on our training continuum for June, but I would love if this could be a presentation, a formal presentation for the IRC um, the next meeting, uh, because it's very important, and it does affect the demographer, RFP, all of these different issues that we're bringing up, also regarding legislation. So I really appreciate that.
Do we noted? Thank you. We'll try our best to balance that. And um, Commissioner Pons, just to be clear, uh, point taken. We're trying to balance commissioner interest and commissioner action, public interest and public action. And it's an art, not a science. So beg your patience as we keep the agenda going, but point well taken on keeping priorities as priorities. We'll, we'll do our best on that. Co-vice chair Katerina.
I, I had a couple of things I wanted to mention. Um, I would, I would want to see if we can return the closed session option back to the agenda. Um, just to have it as a standing item, uh, perhaps at the end. Um, I also want to, um, uh, as we are transitioning into an operational mode, uh, with our new contractors coming on board in the coming months, I really want to get the point of contact discussion underway because that's going to be um substantial. And I think it's probably going to take a discussion and some time and some, and some action items. And then the third piece is, um, so getting some clarity on the ex parte communications and what we have to, what we're required to do uh by law, and um, and make sure that we have that in place so that we're not spinning our wheels unnecessarily. But always looking forward to having improved transparency. Thank you.
Very good. Commissioner Krugliak and then Commissioner Serbin.
Mine is just in addition to what Commissioner Diaz mentioned. Um, I was going to bring up the Voting Rights Act and if that presentation could specifically address why, um, the, the, the concerns that were raised by the five speakers at the beginning of our meeting. Um, a little unclear why um a challenge to a map necessarily um, precludes a, a lot, a demographer's, um, suitability for a role. Um, so just if that could be part of the presentation, that would be great.
Yeah, I think that's a great point, and I think we'll try to, uh, whenever we get to the Voting Rights Act, but I heard both of you on it, uh, we'll try to make sure the points that came up throughout the day today from those public comments, as well as some of the discussions we have with map making are incorporated, so we understand how the data flows, as well as how it may affect different firms and what the history of uh, Voting Rights Act applications and requirements might be. Commissioner Serbin.
So this isn't something we have to answer now, but with respect to the Voting Rights Act and, and training, I'm wondering if it's something that that's, that's, that's a, a question or a presentation that counsel might, might address, or if that's even something we would want our counsel to, to do. I mean, it seems like they're the most qualified to, to uh present that information to us.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll ask staff and council to explore that. I think there was at least one speaker recommended on that at one point. Um, but I, I certainly think we should draw on all sources of wisdom. Uh, and again, I'll ask commissioners who have experience working with this to be prepared to weigh in, uh, maybe at a level of detail more than what they've done to date. I think it'd be a fascinating discussion. I'm sure we'll have it. We'll just have to figure out on timing, but I hear the request to have it on the twenty-seventh in our next meeting. Any other comments, ideas, questions on future agenda items? Very good. Thank you very much for that input. It helps a lot. We'll move on to adjournment then. That concludes the business before the commission this afternoon. The next meeting in the Independent Redistricting Commission will be Thursday, May twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-one at five-thirty PM. This meeting, unless there's any additional closing thoughts, is adjourned at five forty-four PM. Thank you all.